Statement. Could just read it off the.
Yeah.
Not at all. Yeah, thank you. Go. Um, before we start, I have a statement, uh, current statement that I'd like to read, um, behalf of the city council. As we collect ourselves and settle into new leadership for this council, I thought it would be helpful to cover a few lingering questions left from the public dialogue of last week. First of all, I want to discuss the mayor's office and his relationship with the council in the city. Every year, the council takes time to appoint a mayor and vice mayor from among the seated members of the city council who are appointed to oversee the facilitation of council gatherings and ceremonial responsibilities of the council. The appointment of these fellow council people does not change the fact that they are still elected officials uh, put in their council positions relative to the direction of the voters of their respective wards. In other words, councilperson or a mayor are not employees of the city or the council who can be fired. Uh, summarily dismissed at will as well. The only people the council could, uh, consider, uh, consider as to continue tenure with the city or our city manager, the city attorney and our municipal jo- judge. Formal channels are available to the council, however, to consider members for removal from their seat of council. If the threshold available in current ordinances are believed to be met by a majority of the council, the council can then initiate administrative hearing overseen by an appointment hearing officer with the guidance of outside counsel, pursuant to the determination of said hearing, a counselor may then be removed. The electorate can also proceed with the removal of a counselor pursuant to a petition being completed by twenty-five percent of the registered voters and a special election that allows the voters of said ward to determine that counselors continue tenure um, with the city council. Many are wondering why the Casper Police Department, uh, has not arrested Mr. Nell or issued charges. The reason is that the alleged crime took place in Austin, Texas during a personal trip of the Nells, which automatically removes the authority of the CPD to conduct an investigation or perform an arrest. Furthermore, the CPD has an ethical obligation that, that even if a crime has occurred in Casper alleged at the hands of Mr. Nell to refer, to refer those responsibilities, uh, refer those possibilities to another law enforcement agency for review, like the sheriff's office or the Department of Criminal Investigation. In order to have a more unbiased and non-conflicted evaluation of whether or not a law had been broken or determined if charges need to be filed. At this point in time, we are not aware that any investigations are underway, uh, either in Wyoming or Texas of Mr. Nell. CPT will not involve at any time for the reasons, will not be involved at any time or any reason, uh, just described. As you know, Mr. Nell has voluntarily, has voluntarily resigned his position with the city council, which has the effect of forfeiting his appointment of mayor on nine twenty-one. Thank you. I will also say that I know there are some council members that do have some statements that they will, um, be having tonight, uh, uh, during our round table. Um, so I just want to make everybody aware of that, that there's some personal or some individual council members with, um, some statements, so. All right, meeting follow-up, Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, your honor, members of the council. A good evening. I don't know that I have anything else to, uh, follow up on from.
Okay. Uh, any council members have anything they'd like to follow up on or questions from the last meeting? With, uh, our city manager? Nothing? Okay. All right. Um, looking for direction requested on the neighborhood health program, Carter.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, pursuant to council's request to, to look at, uh, programs uh, similar to the memo that you received in your packets. Uh, Mr. Schiffman and I had the opportunity to sit down and visit, and you'll recall that he was a citizen that brought this idea forward during one of, uh, your, um, communications from the floor. Episodes times, if you will. And, uh, given the conversation that, that Mr. Schiffman and I have had, he is here tonight to follow up with a little more detail um, surrounding his idea and his proposal. Again, you, uh, you had a memo in your packet that laid out some of those details a little more um, appropriately as well, and, uh, tonight's opportunity is to hear the proposal, ask questions, and then provide direction accordingly. So with that, Mr. Mayor, if I can turn the time over to, uh, to Ross, that'd be great.
Perfect. Mr. Schiffman.
Good evening. Thank you for this opportunity. Uh, back in, uh, it was July eleventh, you had a work session and Liz Becker gave a presentation about properties within the city that are not being maintained. And, uh, had a chance to talk with her briefly, and then I appreciate conversation, meeting that I had with the city manager, I guess about two weeks ago, and, and kind of expanded a little bit more what we can do. Uh, I've found being a resident in Casper, the people are very, uh, helpful to region. Um, I know of neighbors that somebody has a medical issue and they'll come over and cut the lawn or uh, last winter when we had all that snow, I broke my snow shovel because I was taking too much snow on one, one, uh, charger that's shoveled, and my neighbor helped me finish the, uh, the driving. Um, so we've got something going for us here in the fact that many people are helpful and caring about their neighbors. The, the purpose of this is really, I kind of see two groups, uh, and we talked about a little bit. One group is people that need some help, but maybe don't want to ask for it sometimes. Um, but if it's done discreetly, maybe they'll be able to take some help from, from all of us. There's another group, which is those that are just, they're like, they really care. Uh, and then I understand there's a lot of owners that are not part of the community. Um, and it's their property and responsibility that the tenants, um, are living here. Um, so the purpose is to assist ba- mainly low-income people, elderly and disabled Casper residents who are struggling with their property. Uh, and the goal is to improve the quality of life for residents and their neighbors. And from what I can tell from that, uh, that work session, uh, overgrown grass, uh, trees that are not being trimmed, that maybe, uh, block, uh, the driveways and, and sometimes the roads, shrubbery that's not being maintained, junk, um, abandoned cars and other safety hazards. Uh, one of the things that we, we talked about is the possibility of various organizations or businesses that may be involved, and, um, speaking of that, uh, you know, Meals on Wheels, they have a lot of contact with the people in the community that, that they, they visit those people, and maybe they might be a conduit for some of these people to get some help. Another area would be real estate agents, because if you're trying to sell a property and next door is not in very good shape, it, it kind of makes it difficult, and, uh, they would probably know where, where some of these, these properties are and, uh, to, to help out. Another thing might be the senior center. Uh, because they, they deal with the elderly and many times these people need some help. Uh, providers might be local businesses, um, also thinking of maybe high school, um, students and college students that would be involved in doing s- simple things like cutting the grass, because I know the city's been paying for some of this. And, uh, we could all maybe get together and, and help on that. Um, fixing things up. Rotary Club helped, uh, a gentleman who has some, some, um, mental disabilities with painting his house and, um, a, um, a local roofer, uh, provided some, some funding to repair his roof. Qualifications would be, I would think would be a simple form. Um, I, I think not getting into getting tax, um, uh, returns and things like that, but maybe an honor system, um. And the privacy issue too, because some people are, are proud of them, you know, not getting help, but they need help. And so, you know, to have a form that's a very simple form for them to fill out. Um, you know, if they have a disability or, uh, their, their income is low and they need some help. Um, a question, and then maybe this is more of a returning, um, of going onto a property that a tenant is living here, but the owner is, is somewhere, but not cooperating with the city. Uh, are we allowed to go onto that property and help the tenant maintain that property? Uh, reporting, uh, to determine how the program is going would be a periodic review of the effectiveness. Is it improving the community? Is that, is that property being maintained on a regular basis? Um, is the person getting other services as, as mentioned before, the two-one-one program? Are they taking advantage of some of those programs that are available to them? Uh, is it a job loss and they just need a position, or they've had a death in the family and they're just grieving and need to come back and get some help? Um, so that's kind of how I look at it, and, you know, I'd be glad to answer any questions, um, Mr. Mayor or anybody in the council has.
Great. I can open it up to council if there's any questions. Um, and Carter, do you, does the city, um, have a recommendation or should we go through questions first?
Um, well, Mr. Mayor, uh, councilors, the, uh, the idea with regard to helping, um, residents and so forth is something that we are always in need of. We, we do come across a number of properties that are unkempt and not, uh, in keeping with the code. And, uh, oftentimes we run into the, the notion that it is a- at the result of an elderly resident or an incapacitated resident of, for some reason. And, uh, and without a doubt, um, having volunteer help to aid that person would be a wonderful resource to, uh, to be able to take advantage of. Um, the concern that I do have with respect to, uh, a, a, a more developed probably, uh, more complicated program would certainly be along the lines of how we would mitigate the costs that our landfill incurs and so forth to remove the, the property, say we need to roll off, and then of course to deposit at the landfill through the refuse fund, and, and you all are certainly very familiar with how that accounting works. Uh, as well as, uh, while I really like the idea of providing some sort of deduction for contribution that the city may receive, a- and of course that can come in many forms. Uh, the, the reality is we don't really have, um, a status that would allow for that type of tax break or benefit, uh, like a five oh one C three would, would have the potential of providing. Um, governments don't generally provide that level of benefit like a, a true nonprofit would. And so th- that would be a challenge, and I'm not sure how we would overcome without that being in place. So a couple of questions to think about. The, uh, the motivation from this or this idea, of course, is very, very welcome and and appreciated, and without a doubt, we, we live and die in, in a lot of ways on volunteerism.
Council. Thoughts? Yeah, Amber.
Um, you know, just on, my, my first reaction is that it, it's something worth pursuing if we've got, um, you know, I, I had the same thought in terms of, you know, the nonprofit status and how that, you know, if, if there's even like a path forward for the city to, um, be affiliated or operate, you know, with an entity like that, but I, I think that maybe we don't have to get, um, get into that at the first juncture, maybe we, um, you know, create the program internally, take contributions that go towards the program, they would not be tax deductible, at least at the outset, and if it proves the case that in fact there is interest in con- contributing to on this sort of effort, there's interest in volunteers, that we've got some private sector partners on board who are willing to do some of the work. Um, you know, maybe, maybe it's a program that, that eventually gets passed off, handed off to a community partner or spun up as its own entity at some point, but, um, but I don't think that should stop us from from trying to prove the case. I, I don't think the, you know, tax deductible contribution is a make or break for whether or not a lot of folks would be interested in chipping in a few bucks. Um, obviously it's a nice benefit to have, and so if it can move in that direction eventually, that's great, but I don't see a problem with the city trying to get it, just prove the case even as helping people, um, see if we see impact, um, and if so, cross that bridge later.
Kyle, Jenna, Lisa, now.
Thanks. Uh, appreciate you being here, Ross. Appreciate you bringing this to our attention. Uh, like the city manager said, always welcome for people that want to build goodwill and uh, donate their time and resources to the community, so I would love to find an avenue uh, for this, and I think it's a great idea to channel people's generosity. It reminds me of, uh, the last big snowstorm we had back in January and February. There was a Facebook group called Wyoming Four by Four Recovery, and they would, uh, a lot of people were obviously getting stuck because we had such tremendous snowfall, and I saw um, huge swarm of volunteers flock to that page to help people no cost, um, uh, in return for nothing, but just help people get out of snow and tow their trucks and stuff like that, so, um, that was super successful. I would love for something like this to be able to channel that generosity and help people. It does make me wonder, uh, with it sounds like, um, you know, it being quite the hurdle for the city to develop its own nonprofit or something like that you mentioned, I believe it was you mentioned, Casper Senior Center. Um, and, uh, it, this kind of sounds like it would be very kind of under their umbrella, and I believe they're a nonprofit, and so, um, it might make more sense to start. Uh, I know this would be open up to like low income and, uh, maybe disabled people that aren't necessarily elderly, but uh, it might make sense to partner with them and get it off the ground, address just the elderly population if it is accessible, and kind of expand what the demographic of people are that you want to serve, but, uh, I love the idea. Um, we, we do live in a very generous, charitable, uh, community-oriented, uh, place, and so I would, any opportunity to channel that energy, I think is worth pursuing.
Jenna.
My comment is, Ross, it's going to be kind of on the same lines as what Kyle just mentioned. Um, I think this is a great opportunity. Everybody knows too, I have a passion for volunteering and I do a lot of it myself. However, in this case, I don't honestly feel like it's a place for the city to do that. I think that we have a, we can maybe have a partnership or learn or, or help in some form, but having it be us that are city time, resources and people, I don't think that it's something that we have the resources to do right now. I could be completely wrong, however, I don't think so, but, um, I think it would be better left for some community uh, groups such as a five oh one C three, um, to organize and to champion, and then maybe we can help them with the dump costs for that, or, you know, some other kind of aspect of it, but right now I don't feel that, um, the city should take on something of this capacity when we have other resources that we need to be in touch with.
Vice Mayor.
I, um, I'm just going to touch on the, the real estate piece of it. Um, so, so as the tenant piece of it, that I strongly recommend you never just put on a property that you think is being rented. Um, you do need to give them notice or, or whatever else, and so they're not generally willing to. So as a property manager, we do offer help or services or, or whatever, but I can coordinate with the owner and the tenant and to get things done that way. I can't speak for other property managers, but we try to take it pretty seriously. Um, as for the real estate piece, um, we realtors, I know that people don't think that we do a lot, but the, the last thing I'm going to do is go clean off the neighbors piece when I'm listing this one, so my focus is the house that I'm listing, and I'm not focusing necessarily on the neighbors. Um, it, it just is what it is, because in the wintertime, we're having to shovel the walk when we're trying to do open houses and things, and so it's, we're already having to maintain that property if it's happening to be vacant, and I'm not maintaining the neighborhood, you can't make me.
Amber.
Thank you. I, um, so, uh, you know, I think Kyle and Jenna's points are, are well taken, and it's trying, trying to find, you know, what is the right mechanism, but I do think it's worth including the conversation, the fact that, that this issue already costs the city money, that we're already dealing with. We, I mean, we just, I don't know what are, what the dollar amount of these types of, um, uh, services that we've had to contract out, um, we just recently talked about it, but, um, meant, much of that never gets collected, and so that's just money that we're out of pocket paying full price to some sort of, you know, local service provider to clean up somebody's yard or, or, you know, whatever. So I, I think in, in my mind, the sort of the proof of this program would be like, can we see a reduction in the amount of money that the city is paying into properties to get them, um, up to code, billing back to the property owner and never recovering, and so to me, if, if we can use some sort of collaborative program to help reduce that investment that the city is making in a more sort of proactive way, you know, if r- right now, one of those properties, I, I think I remember one of them being many, many thousands of dollars that are, that are unclaimed, I think if we're working with a, a program that has volunteers or whatnot, we may be able to service many houses for that same price that we would have had out of pocket just trying to deal with one property, so. So I do think that there is an interplay with the city, given that we are in many cases, uh, or at least in some cases, um, already spending and losing money on, on this situation.
Jenna.
Understand what you're saying too, and, but I'm looking at, I think the bigger picture too, when I say it, is the providers, he's relying an awful lot on this, in this plan on the city services and city. Um, and also it says on here for the providers, the local businesses that provide these kinds of services and potential to lower the cost or donated time in guarantee, and those people who own those businesses, a lot of them, some of the ones that want to donate their time do donate their time and give back to the city already. There's going to be, if they're obligated to do it, you, I just think you're going to have a hard time finding participation as far as your volunteers, those different companies offering you a lower cost or economy, everybody's struggling right now too, they're probably not going to want to give their work and labor for free. I mean, I could be totally wrong, it's just my opinion, but, um, the volunteers, that is where the five oh one C three, a community group is going to generate more volunteers who have that same passion than asking for volunteers to come help with the city, I mean, we do that with Hobbiton at the cleanup, you know, and people show up for that, but it's because they believe in the cause, and they believe in that, um, the slopes and skiing, whereas there are people who out there in those nonprofits that believe in that cause of helping the elderly, excuse me, and cleaning up those houses and things, so my thing is targeting with those special interest groups there, you can generate more volunteerism than having it be a city organized run operation, because even high school, you have high school and college kids, students on here. There's a small percentage of each of those groups that actually want to donate their time back into the community, and those are probably the honor society ones, or the A kids or four age perhaps, but those are the groups I feel that should be better off championing than the cities at this point. If it gets bigger, you know, and a lot of call for it, then I think maybe there's a chance down the road. Partnership with this thing.
Got three councilors on line here to go next, but can I just ask you a super quick question, Carter? Um, the capacity for the, for the city, I, I guess I wouldn't get it, you know, maybe you can answer this for me, Ross, is who's going to coordinate, I guess, who's the, is there like a hired staff member that would have to be somebody for the city to do that? How would, how would, I guess, I, I would need to envision that type of investment, I guess.
Well, Mr. Mayor, certainly I think that would depend on the scope that's ultimately decided, right? Uh, that, that would drive where this will go or how many people we'd need to engage.
Okay.
Uh, but, uh, without a doubt, you know, um, the, uh, the position that is within the community engagement, um, office, uh, would be a position that I would naturally want to turn to for that kind of help, particularly if we can keep it on a relatively smaller scale. Um, um, and, and that would be sort of liaison with nonprofits that we could appeal to, to get the help when.
Okay.
When that kind of help is warranted.
Okay, thank you. So, thank you guys for letting me jump in there. Uh, Kyle.
Thank you, Mayor. And thanks, Ross, for mentioning that we talked about this at our July eleventh meeting, to help me find the answer I was looking for, I was going to ask the city manager if he could quantify what our current costs are to the city, and it looks like in that memo from July eleven, code enforcement paid out twenty-seven thousand enforcement owing, and we recovered about seventy-five percent, so it sounds like we're about out six grand or so, does that sound in mind with your understanding, Carter?
Mr. Mayor, uh, counselor, thank you for bringing that up, that would be typically for properties that are really recalcitrant when it comes to getting their weeds mowed and those kinds of things taken care of, and we have to bill uh, for those, those charges that the taxpayers have incurred. Um, uh, and so when we don't get those bills paid back, sometimes we will get lien processing, those kinds of things. But again, that is mostly relegated to neighbors who just aren't interested in and, and can, uh, keep up their properties.
Thank you for the distinction.
Vice Mayor.
Oh, I'm sorry. I, um, was going to suggest my son's an Eagle Scout, and as a Boy Scout throughout his years, they have to do the service project. And so Boy Scouts of America might be a great group to coordinate with. And then I would, was thinking that even like a Facebook groups where people could go in and say, hey, I need help, and then others could join in. But the Boy Scouts, they, they get their service awards and community is part of that, and I believe the Girl Scouts do that as well, so. So that's something to probably just reach out to.
U- diversion.
Mandatory.
Youth, youth diversions? That might be another thing with youth diversion.
Steve.
Oh. One of the things, and Carter brought it up, that I was going to bring up is a lot of our big expenses have been the people that Carter mentioned, and we go out there and we clean the property up, and then there are hoarders, there are whatever, and six months later, it's junk again. So that's where we have to be very careful as well, because we aren't just the cleanup. I think Mr. Schiffman is really talking about the lady that broke her leg that can't get out anymore, or her husband passed away and she's eighty-five years old and needs a hand trying to fix the front porch, or those types of things, I believe it's more of a, a one-time to get them through a particular situation, which I love the idea of the five oh three C, and I know that Ms. Becker back when, and I don't remember whether she used CGBD funds to pay for materials or not, but there was, um, was it World Changers or was that the name of the org? Okay, thank you. But there was World Changers that came through, and I know through that CBGD program and her office, they selected which ones to use, so that may be a very good resource to find out how they screened the projects to know where to go and what to do. And then the people that came through were the labor that Mr. Schiffman is talking about, and if you could find an organization, and again, uh, Ms. Eads, Lisa Eads would be a great one to talk to about a five oh three C to where it's all strictly volunteer, and any money that comes in winds up going to either buy materials or if it's something that you do need to hire a contractor for, that they could do that. But basically, they operate strictly, and every dime they bring in goes back out as help to the families of the children with cancer. And so that's why I said, to me, that would be a great resource as well to see how she has started and structured that five oh three C, and then the connection to the city could be through like what, uh, Carter was talking about is code enforcement goes out and finds out that, yeah, they're, they're in the hospital and they can't do anything right now, so, okay. Then they refer that to the five oh three C, or if somebody hears about it, they can go to that organization. it, they can go to that organization. And basically, neighbors helping neighbors, 503(c), you could get your tax deductible contribution and kind of satisfies a little bit of everything we're talking about here. So just throwing that out as a, then listening to all the ideas and everything.
Okay, Amber, Kyle, Mike. Go ahead, Amber.
Um, Carter, have you had any conversation with the chief or code enforcement about any sort of anecdotal evidence that they might have in terms of when they're making contact with citizens? If they see an unmet need in this area, or if, or if this is not the barrier that's preventing people from maintaining their properties to code?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, counselor, I would say anecdotally, we do run into those things periodically. Typically though, you know, we, the property owner finds a way to get those issues mitigated, you know, either from the neighbor that they solicit, or a family member that's in town, or whatever, if I'm answering your question correctly.
Yeah, your follow-up, if I can. So, I mean, I'm thinking, I, I, I agree that the nonprofit sector is one place where this issue could be addressed, but we also can't compel the founding of a 501(c)(3) in order to deal with this issue. I mean, certainly, Mr. Schiffman could go form one, but he's brought it to us. So I'm trying to think about how, how might the city get to yes on this, even if it's, you know, not this exact form, rather than say like, oh, like, let's just make a nonprofit. Like, I think that's a lot more, you know, potentially complicated, and it may not be the solution that we're imagining it to be. I, I wonder if, if, you know, something very simple such as an account that we can publicize and say, hey, we've got this place. Like, if, if this is important to you, here's a repository for funds that you'd like to help financially, if there's a service organization that feels strongly about this, that raises money, that wants to send it to the city to say like, hey, this is a fund for this. In those cases, when code enforcement goes out, makes contact, says, hey, this is, you know, this is what needs to be done. And they say, oh, I'm very sorry, I, you know, had a long-term illness and I haven't been able to get to it. Then they say, did you know, we've got this fund? And we would be happy to send you the application and see if we could, you know, deploy some of this to help you out. So to me, that would be sort of, in its simplest form, the way this program could work. Obviously, like, it can get very complicated. You can have teams of volunteers, and you can have all these things, but it also could be quite a bit simpler, I think. And I'm wondering if, if the council would entertain something like that, or have staff look into further, you know, what types of mechanisms exist within the city to potentially address this issue more on a code enforcement to citizen basis within that department?
Sure. Yeah, Mayor, and councilors. So just to pick up on a couple of themes, just anecdotally, working with code enforcement recently, some of our worst cases really aren't kind of what we're discussing here, where you've got, you know, somebody that's elderly, and there's oftentimes criminal behavior involved. There's, you know, substance abuse, sometimes severe mental illness. But certainly, there, there would be a niche where, where this type of service could get useful. I think from, from the legal standpoint, looking at what Mr. Schiffman had proposed, I mean, there's, there's some legal hurdles there, right? I think it would be problematic for the city to, you know, and I'm sure we could establish the 501(c)(3) because that is an extension of the city. What does that do in terms of liability exposure if the city takes on running that? You know, it spiraled very quickly in terms of other nuances. In terms of, you know, a, a fund that's designated, certainly you've got to put some sideboards around that to be constitutionally compliant, because we can't just donate money to, to random folks. So there would have to be some, you know, poverty threshold that they would go below, so it, it can go under that council. So there, I think it's, it's a laudable goal, I think, to, to institute a program like this. I'm not sure from a legal standpoint and even an administrative standpoint, the city being kind of the tip of the spear, if you will, on this makes the most sense. However, I do think there's probably some opportunities to, to partner with other folks within the community, also through, through code enforcement, just identifying these properties and acting as kind of a clearinghouse. I think those, those would be pretty, you know, low, low fruits to, to kind of pick there. But certainly, I wouldn't want to commit staff, because I think that's something we would have to get with the folks in code enforcement, say, okay, how, how could this work? But, but certainly, kind of a full-blown program where the city is kind of the leader on this, I think there's a lot of legal questions we'd have to answer.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor. Thanks, Eric, for that summary. I'm personally leaning towards like a Facebook group or a nonprofit outside the umbrella of the city, and the city can be a partner in that, based on what I've heard. But I'm curious, Mr. Schiffman, I believe you have experience running these sorts of programs in other places. I was curious, you've heard some of our docs' concerns, questions. I was curious if you had any responses or rebuttals?
Well, a couple of things. First of all, the whole idea originally was the fact that the city is paying for a lot of this, and obviously, staff is identifying code enforcement in other situations. So the, the city could be helpful in kind of being the conduit of who needs help and having a simple form. And then a nonprofit, there's a lot of nonprofits in the community, maybe a few of them, because one might focus on the elderly, like Senior Center, one might focus on some of the other needs in the community. So that's kind of how I was looking at it. Originally, I was thinking that the city could maybe do something within, as far as the funding, but that doesn't really work. It really would have to be local service organization, 501(c)(3). I work with what was called the Montgomery County Foundation for Animal Rescue, and I think that's what you're referring to. But I didn't set up my own 501(c)(3) because it involves a lot of work. And, but the Montgomery County Foundation is a donor advised fund. So a donor advised fund is an easy way for people to make donations in honor of somebody or memory of somebody. So that's one way to do it. A couple other things, you know, we're already paying for some of this, and the city knows some of these properties and the situations. And that could be where the city could be helpful and reduce some of the costs. I don't expect any business to be going around, and especially, you know, if you're selling a property, you're not going to go next door and, and do that, but you might see a situation that needs maybe code enforcement to go out more in your, in the community. And I see that, you know, riding around the neighborhood or knocking on doors in the neighborhoods, different situations. You see one house on the block that's not being maintained. You don't really know what the situation is. And it takes a light touch, I think, initially. Again, because people sometimes don't want to ask for help, but when you, when you offer it, it's a simple thing, maybe they'll, they'll help out. So that's kind of how it is.
Thank you. I got Mike Bond. Go ahead, Mike.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of quick comments. First of all, I want to say thank you to Mr. Schiffman for, for bringing this forward. I think it's at face value. I think it's a great idea. I love the idea of neighbors helping neighbors. I, I also think there are, there is a wealth of, of resources and volunteers in, in the community that would step up. I do think there's going to be some, obviously, some, some organization and administration that's going to need to be undertaken to get this going and to keep it going, both recruiting, recruiting volunteers as well as identifying those folks in need of, of the types of services. I, the city attorney addressed some of the issues that I was thinking about in terms of liability. And I also think that, you know, I mean, in terms of if volunteers on somebody's property is injured, you know, who's liable, you know, that type of thing. If, if they're working for someone, typically they have like the, you know, accident insurance or whatever. So I think that, that raises one question. I think also the, the idea of the, the people who maybe are organizing this, perhaps could be, you know, it's going to be a partnership, obviously, but I, I do, I do have a concern about city staff taking on more work. Thank you.
I'm going to go with Brandy, and then I think we'll start wrapping up. Does anybody else have any burning questions? Okay, Brandy?
So, Mr. Bond actually brought up a few of my concerns. I feel like this is going to be, it sounds like a if not us, then who situation, and I hate to do that, but on the same note, I'm not comfortable saying, oh, we have these volunteers, these kids that need community service, or whomever. Property damage is the first thing that comes to mind. So are we using our mowers? Are we using their mowers? Did they break a sprinkler? Did they break their ankle? I don't want to open the city up to potential issues because we had volunteers, and we don't necessarily know what we're doing in regards to protecting, protecting ourselves from a volunteer situation where the city's liable. And then nobody wants us to do that either, I'm sure. But I do feel like the, so when it comes to volunteers, I'm not really comfortable there at all. I don't dislike the idea of that fund, especially because we do spend so many. So I would be comfortable saying, yes, I think the city should have a fund where, if this is a possibility. But I feel like really what I would like to see, Mr. Schiffman, is for you to find a not-for-profit that's willing to start this with you. Because I think between ideas, we've already had a couple, ooh, you could talk to, ooh, you could talk to. As far as ideas and us figuring out people who might have the need, I think we could probably be assisting there. But providing the services, finding the donations, finding the volunteers, all of that, I think is out of our purview. But if you took it on, I feel like you could come back and say, hey, man, let's talk fifth cent not-for-profit. This is what I'm wanting you guys, it'll benefit you. And I think then we would be a lot more on board. And I think we could be.
Okay. So you're looking for direction. Mr. Schiffman, did you have anything you wanted to ask? Okay, thank you. So I guess I'll just do my two cents very quickly. I think, I, I think kind of looking at this, my heart lives, obviously, in nonprofit work, and that's where I really kind of do a lot of my stuff. And I love this idea. I love the idea of all terrorism. I love the idea of giving back into the community. I think it's super important that we do that. I'm not sure if the city is the mechanism for us to do the full thing, but I do agree with council members who are saying how we could figure out some type of partnership to be able to utilize this for the community would be very good. I think it would lie more probably within a nonprofit to execute, help to execute that when the city could play a partnership with community engagement and others within the city to be able to do that. That's my two cents. But I guess we need a direction to give to Carter to move forward with this, so.
I don't see us trying to spend city money on this. You know, we're talking about this program. We're talking about trying to institute spay and neuter. If you look at our sales tax right now, we are not meeting budget on sales tax. We have no money. We don't need to be starting a new program when we don't have the money to carry out our existing programs. And I think your idea of maybe partnering with an existing nonprofit, so you don't have to do the headaches that Mr. Schiffman was talking about, would potentially be a great idea. That that gets you rolling into the nonprofit mode, and then have a separate side of that particular one to help out these people. Like, maybe through a meals on wheels, or, you know, I don't know, but I don't think the city needs to get involved with another program.
Amber, then Kyle.
Um, I guess the direction that I would offer, it sounds like the council of art prefers, you know, the city playing some sort of support role, particularly in the, in the realm of connecting folks who might need the service with some of the issues that we're seeing through code enforcement. So I'm wondering if council would support direction to spend a little bit of staff time cashing out what our, what our internal role might look like, you know, speaking with code enforcement to say, as you're making these visits, what would be a reasonable mechanism for you to use to kind of track some of this stuff and see where the needs might be? You know, do we have a mechanism in place to be able to even identify that, or we'd have to invent one, you know, to get a little bit of a scope of what it would look like from the city standpoint? If we're not interested in, you know, increasing any budget anywhere, I would, I would think part of that question that would need to be answered is can we do it with current staff? Because if the answer is no, then we may not have any role to play at all if, if the council's not supportive of, you know, any funding in this direction. So, you know, some of those like logistical questions, so that Mr. Schiffman may be able to continue to help us in making that connection with a nonprofit or multiple nonprofits, is, you know, drum up interest with them, just as interest maybe has been drummed up on this end. And then we would just need to tie the two together.
Kyle? Thanks, Mayor. I would support Counselor Pollack's suggestions. I also want to thank Counselor Kathy for the mention of the sales tax being under budget. I've admitted bringing that up. Has been a cause of concern for mine. We're just a few months into fiscal year, but I've noticed that as well the past couple of months. And I just wanted to offer to Mr. Schiffman, it sounds like council is kind of in alignment with thinking that a nonprofit should be the tip of the spear on something like this. And so I'd be happy to introduce you, if you haven't already met, the couple that come to mind are Kathy from Senior Center. I think that would be a really good fit. Amy Ottley's the executive director over there, and I think a lot of us have met her. Happy to make that connection. Interfaith, Lindsay Tempest is the executive director over there. She serves low-income and needy people. That'd be another great fit. So whatever connections you need made to continue exploring this, I'm happy to help you make those.
Thanks, Kyle. So would, would council be amenable to Amber's suggestion of giving some time for the city staff to look at some avenues and partnerships, and the needs, what that would look like, while we're looking at also seeing if Mr. Schiffman can work with some nonprofits to kind of start solidifying how that would come together? Is that something, did I say that completely fragmented and word-salvably for you, Carter? It's been a while since I've had to reframe everything. I'll let, I'll let Amber clarify for me.
I think my direction would be.
Nothing the phrase said.
Would be to explore, imagine that we do have a group of nonprofits or a single nonprofit ready to take on their piece of this, explore if and how the city would be able to manage their, their end of the, the partnership. So is it even feasible? Would we need staff? You know, and, and based on, you know, we'd have to base that off of just, you know, talking with code enforcement, I presume, and see what they think the initial need might be. And so to, to, to go through the exercise of figuring out like what our end of that could look like.
Carter. Mr. Mayor, counselor, thank you for restating that. We, we, you know, I feel relatively comfortable that I can tell you that, again, given a fairly limited scope, we have, you know, we have a position whose job it is to help with outreach on these kinds of things. Because we, you know, we do clean, we do coordinate, excuse me, a lot of cleanups and volunteer activities already, just not in this particular realm of things. And so if indeed it, it, this is a scope that remains fairly limited and defined, we, we certainly come in contact already with folks who have, you know, needs and not a lot of capacity to deal with some of their property issues. It doesn't happen a whole lot, but, but we do come into those contacts. So I, I feel relatively comfortable that we have an employee who can help facilitate a position, and we certainly have contacts that occur that with this program in mind, and potentially the right partners available. That's right. Providing that information and those contacts, you know, shouldn't be too, too onerous, if that's where it's kind of left, or else.
Council? That felt good. So, Mr. Schiffman, it sounds like what we're going to try to do here is that we do have a mechanism within, over working with people and trying to find those solutions. But I think what we're trying, I think from a council standpoint, is, is really kind of giving you the opportunity to go out and talk to some nonprofits. giving you the opportunity to go out and and talk to some nonprofits and and see what those partnerships might look like um, to be able to create something like this, because we find the benefit of it. I think nobody's disagreeing with that, um, if that's something that's amenable to you. Great. Awesome. So does that sound good?
Absolutely. Okay, thank you.
Awesome. Thank you all. Thanks, Mr. Schriftman. We appreciate you. All right, aquatics business plans.
Hey, Mr. Mayor, I'd be happy to jump on that with you.
Please, thank you. Sorry. I would, I've kind of paused there for a second.
The silence was killing me.
I should have said, could you tee us off?
No problem.
Thanks, Carter.
Uh, thi- this is the opportunity that we'd like to take with council to go through, uh, some of our um, implementation steps and and guidance generally that you might have as it relates to working with the Aquatics Enterprise. Um, we we've talked about aquatics in the past and, you know, have have given you a broad overview. Now we're looking at some things that we may want to consider on a more finite basis. Um, one of the things that I've really appreciated in terms of what staff has done is, as you'll see here, they they've broken out each of the pools, as if they are um, all business enterprise within the the overall Aquatics Enterprise, so to speak. And that that data is just really, really helpful in terms of where our loss leaders are and who are our cost providers, our our revenue providers are, very, very interesting data. Um, so i- if I can, and you don't mind, I'd prefer to uh, let Ms. Lopez walk us through the data and some of the guidelines and and ideas that she'd like to pursue.
Mima, Malcolm.
Evening, Mayor, Counselor. Good evening, you again tonight. Uh, I wanted to start by introducing a couple of members of my team that'll be here to help me answer any questions that you have. Um, so first Edwin Lures is our Aquatics Supervisor. Um, and then Jason Oslin, you may recognize him as the superintendent at our municipal golf course. Um, but he has stepped into the interim rec manager role to help me out while we um, pursue a replacement for our recreation manager that was vacated by Phil Moye. So I really appreciate, uh, Jason, I wanted to introduce him to this team as somebody that will definitely be helping me uh, in in the short term until we can find that replacement. So um, we'll go ahead and dive in, uh, first with a reminder. So the last time I saw you, almost a year ago, um, to talk specifically about aquatics, and at that time, we presented some strategies to try to uh, reduce expenses and increase revenue into the Aquatics Fund. Um, and so council supported us moving forward with some of these uh, initiatives and embedding them out a little further, if you will, and and we have had the opportunity to do that over the last year um, and are now ready to present um, our business plan for the next five years moving forward. But first, we really wanted to let you know where we finish out fiscal year twenty-three, um, how we look from a budget perspective in fiscal year twenty-four. Um, and this fund has been an exceptional challenge this year, um, primarily, as you know, because of the Aquatic Center roof and the massive um, capital investment that's been required to reconstruct that roof so that it's um, safe and sustainable into the future. And so, uh, when we built our fiscal year twenty-four budget, we weren't really sure what the status of that project was going to be, if it would be delayed another year or if we would try to pursue it right away. Uh, and so we built our fiscal year twenty-four budget uh, without that project in mind, knowing that if it did move forward, we would need to make some adjustments in the form of a budget amendment. Um, and that does look like that's what we're going to need to do. But, um, so to fini- finish out fiscal year twenty-three, um, we we actually started to see the impacts of the Aquatics Roof um, at that time. When we started talking about that project uh, way back in the fall of twenty-one, um, people heard that, of course, and and so we we definitely saw some decreases in the attendance at the Aquatic Center and primarily in our memberships, so that people could go to the Aquatic Center repeatedly over a long period of time. Um, and so, um, partially because of that, we did not end up fiscal year twenty-three as strong as we would have liked to. Um, and so we finished out the year at a forty-six point two percent cost recovery for the fund as a whole. Uh, and of course, our our cost recovery goal established by this body in twenty-eighteen was fifty-eight percent. So so we did fall short. Um, moving forward into FY twenty-four, we budgeted based on, um, you know, trying to meet that cost recovery goal of uh, fifty-eight percent. Um, but even with our budget, we were fairly conservative and and hit a target of um, just over fifty percent. Um, but now, as we've seen the first impacts um, of the closure of the Aquatic Center since July, um, Edwin has done a lot of work to crunch those numbers and and try to give some some really solid estimates on where we think we're gonna end out for fiscal year. Um, we also made some adjustments that we weren't necessarily anticipating in terms of keeping the outdoor pools open a little bit longer since the Aquatic Center was closed. And so, um, you may have heard that Mike Cedar Pool was actually open well into September after school started, which is something that we don't typically do. So, um, right now, though, we are looking.
Hold your point, second. Amber had a question.
Um, could you talk to me a little bit more about um, the membership number and um, if you feel confident that that will be, that they do attribute that decline specifically to the roof conversation, or do you feel like there's any other factors involved that could be with us post-construction, or do you think that that will resolve itself?
Uh, Mayor, Counselor, great question. Um, so that's just one factor. Uh, certainly, the YMCA opened with a brand-new aquatics facility, and so uh, we do attribute some of the membership loss to that facility. Um, and and a lot of it was actually uh, combined, right? They knew that the Y was opening. They knew our facility would likely soon be closing, and so transition those memberships over kind of proactively. Uh, we hope we will see a lot of those customers return because we do offer some amenities, particularly at the Casper Family Aquatic Center that are not offered at the YMCA. And so uh, people who love our slides, people who love our lazy river will likely be coming back to us once we can reopen. But certainly, there there were other contributing factors.
Okay, thank you.
Kyle, Jefferson.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. And thanks, Edwin. Sorry to barge right into the middle of your presentation. Sure you got lots more to share with us. Uh, I don't believe I've seen this, though. Is there any way we could get this sent to us, this spreadsheet? I just can't see it right now. Um, uh, I'm a data hog, so I would love if we were able to get a copy of this. Um, and then also, you mentioned the fact that we kept Mike Cedar Pool open. I don't, if you have this later on in your presentation, feel free to disregard my question until then, but I was curious, what were our observations? You know, because we get feedback from people, why do you close the pool so early? And my understanding was that it was economic, you know, uh, purely economics. What were your observations keeping Mike Cedar open later this year? What did you see?
Um, Mayor, Counselor, I'm gonna attempt to answer your question, and then I may defer to Edwin if that's okay. But um, so a couple of situations that even allowed us to to keep Mike Cedar open was the fact that the Aquatic Center was closed. Part of the reason we cannot keep the pools, the outdoor pools, open post-school is because we lose a lot of our lifeguard staff, and then we don't have enough lifeguards to hand the pools to the capacity that's safe for our customers. Um, and so because the Aquatic Center was closed, however, we did redirect those lifeguards that would normally be working at the Aquatic Center to the outdoor facilities and staff it appropriately. Um, so that was really probably the primary reason that we were even able to keep Mike Cedar open. And in terms of the visits that we got, uh, certainly we saw a decline during the daytime hours when kids were in school. I don't know that we have the actual numbers. We can produce them, but I'll look to Edwin to see.
Mayor, Counselor, it's actually about a third of the uh, tenants, um, the same amount a day before school started and after, so.
Thank you. Great, William.
Um, so, as I was um, mentioning, I think how we anticipate to uh, end out fiscal year twenty-four, um, with the current closure of the Aquatic Center, which is ex- expected to um, extend through December, we do hope to open in early January, assuming that construction goes according to plan. Um, and so right now, it looks like we're gonna end up in the fund at about a forty-one uh, percent cost recovery uh, in fiscal year twenty-four. So that kind of leads to uh, the five-year capital plan, and I'm gonna start with the fund as a whole, uh, because that is what I presented to you back in October of last year. Um, and it provides a holistic view of the fund health and the subsidy that's required uh, to carry. But then, as the city manager mentioned, uh, we did go through the effort of breaking out each individual pool, um, thanks to the hard work of Edwin and and other staff in our financial services department. Uh, FY twenty-three was the first year that we have data specific to each of the outdoor pools. Prior to that, all of the outdoor pool revenue and expenses was combined into a single uh, grouping, and so it was difficult to extract um, those figures specifically. Um, but now we have the fund structured in a way that we can do that. And so uh, you'll see those numbers for the individual pools. However, they will not go back as far as FY eighteen. Uh, we'll start with FY twenty-three and kind of project forward from that. But in terms of the fund as a whole, uh, this is our five-year plan, so I'll just kind of walk you through, um, you know, what what the diagram is showing us. Um, so FY twenty, um, and twenty-one, you can imagine those were COVID years and aquatics got hit quite hard um, by the pandemic. And so, uh, we certainly saw a significant decline, um, because we had to close um, the pool and, uh, you know, all of the things that went along uh, with the pandemic. Uh, we were able to kind of get back on track and in fact, meet the cost recovery goal for fiscal year twenty-two. Um, and then again, now with the roof, um, project happening and the closure associated with that, uh, we are expecting a decline in fiscal year twenty-three. We saw it in fiscal year twenty-four. We would definitely feel it, although we feel like that's gonna be the worst. Uh, fiscal year twenty-five will still have an impact, um, slightly, but then we should start coming out of it and hopefully get to a place in the next five years where we're at least needing um, the cost recovery goal that you all established for us. Um, and so some some methods that we wanted to highlight in terms of um, getting to that cost recovery goal, we've made a pretty concerted effort over the last couple of years to identify single points of failure, primarily those being pumps, where if one pump goes out, the whole operation is down and we have to close it till we can procure another pump, install it, and give it up. So, um, we've been working really hard to identify those single points of failure to procure backup equipment, so that the time that we're down days or weeks. Um, and so I think that is really going to help us, and the and the numbers that are represented here are actual revenue numbers that we calculated were lost due to closures for mechanical failures like that that can be avoided in the future. Um, and so we're really hopeful that that will um, improve our outlook into the into the future. Um, swim lessons are really, um, probably, well, not probably, it is our our primary uh, cost driver, um, revenue driver, excuse me. So we make a majority of our money from um, swimming lessons, and it's a very important service that we provide to the community, given that we do have a river that runs through our city, and swim lessons are important for our youth and other people who enjoy recreating um, in on the river or on the lakes uh, surrounding our community. And so um, we really work annually to evaluate and and really kind of maximize what we're doing in terms of swim lessons um, and how that sort of relates to the open swim time that we offer, the fitness one can that we offer, and those kinds of things. So um, that is a moving target. It's an adjustment every year based on feedback we're getting from the community, based on financials uh, that we're seeing as a result. And so we will continue to tweak that, um, as we need to. Uh, hopefully, to get the best result that we can all the way around. Uh, we do see an opportunity to create and host new events that are actually put on by a city of Casper staff. Uh, right now, we have a great partnership with the Community Rec Foundation, and they do pay for a couple of big events um, for aquatics each year so that they're free and open to the public. Uh, however, we do see an opportunity for us to host events, and do believe, um, from experience we have even with the pool party, that people were excited to come to those kinds of events and willing to pay to uh, participate. And so uh, we want to monopolize on some of those opportunities and and uh, create fun events for the community that that they're happy to come to and and pay for. Uh, we have been working to eliminate credit card fees. In fact, you may recall that uh, cemetery fees were just uh, transferred uh, through uh, an agreement that you approved at council a couple of weeks ago. Uh, we are currently also working on active net and uh, making that change so that uh, credit card fees across the rec enterprises can be also uh, passed on to the consumer, of course, because we offer all form of payment, or um, so, you know, it it essentially becomes a convenience for people to use their credit cards. Um, that's not done. We would have liked to have it done by now, and it's not quite there yet, but we do anticipate having that done in the next month or so. Um, so we will definitely see savings from that. Um, securing sponsorships and naming rights is is one uh, where we're hopeful that that will yield some benefit in aquatics. Um, and I know I've been telling you for quite a long time that we're almost there, but um, I would expect to see it in the next month for sure. Signatures are already on paper, which is exciting. So, uh, we're almost there with that, and and we're hoping that uh, and you'll see my projections, that we always try to give you numbers that we think are realistic and attainable. Um, and so these numbers are fairly small, but a good factor in that we have five aquatic facilities. Uh, we're hopeful that we can um, get some sponsorships, some corporate sponsorships and and other advertising partnerships in place through that agreement. Um, and then, of course, we have to look at our um, at our business plan and uh, assess fees and increase uh, where that might be reasonable to do. And so, uh, we do plan uh, an evaluation and potential increase in fiscal year twenty-five, and then again, fiscal year twenty-seven. Again, looking at it kind of in every other year, um, evaluation and increase where that makes sense to do that. Um, and then the last one being, you know, adding and modifying amenities at some of the pools and, um, you know, you've seen our five-year capital plan. Some of the aquatics items are are pretty ambitious, and and we're looking at really kind of toning those down and identifying um, some areas where the return on investment will really be most beneficial. Um, and so we have identified a few places where we think we can make some improvements that'll bolster attendance and interest in the facility uh, without costing too terribly. Uh, so that was the fund as a whole. We'll start out individually with the Casper Family Aquatic Center, uh, and of course, like you said, the the outlook is bleak at least until uh, twenty-five and twenty-six, when we start recovering from the closure. So, you know, we ended out fiscal year twenty-three um, at about forty-five percent cost recovery, uh, but we do expect that um, in in that particular operation, twenty-four will be right at thirty percent cost recovery, uh, thirty-one point one, actually. Um, and then after that, we will um, look to make improvements um, in all of those categories that we mentioned, um, specifically. We do hope to see that when we reopen in fiscal year twenty-five with new windows and new paint and reconditioned slide and new uh, starburst and and the facility feels new and safe and wonderful again, we'll see a lot of our customer base return happily uh, to the facility, and we can start regaining some of the momentum that we've lost really since COVID. Um, but you could see even into fiscal year twenty-eight, um, we we fall short of the Aquatic Center of the cost recovery goal of fifty-eight percent. Um, I I can say that I think we still have some work on the budget to do. As we extracted some of the outdoor pools, we were struggling to identify how to allocate some of the administrative costs for Edwin's time, other staff time. Um, and and so that hasn't been perfected just yet. And so as as we take this data and kind of evolve uh, into the new structure of our budgets, I think that we can make some tweaks that will better reflect how this fund is performing without them taking on the brunt of a lot of the administrative expense. Uh, it made sense to apply to the Aquatic Center since it is a annual facility, it's open all year round, um, but in some cases, we may need to shift some of those costs more accurately, um, show the impact across the board at all of the facilities. Uh, this is a much happier story in terms of cost recovery. So this is Mike Cedar. Um, it is by far our most popular pool. It's our newest pool, um, and people in the community absolutely love going to Mike Cedar. Uh, in fact, probably the primary complaint that we get about Mike Cedar is the fact that we have capacity issues when it's so busy and we don't have enough lifeguards to staff and let everybody in. Um, so uh, really, we're very happy to see how this um, operation is performing and looking at ways that we can deal with some of those capacity issues as staff, um, in ways that will help us to not have to turn people away. Uh, and in fact, Edwin's got some fantastic ideas that he's working on in terms of incentives and recruiting and and really getting more lifeguards on board so that we have uh, enough to adequately staff across the board. Um, but really, we we feel strongly that um, in the FY twenty-five and beyond, uh, we could really be very close to a hundred and thirty percent of Mike Cedar four.
I got two. Got Amber and Kyle.
I think you just got, I just want to confirm that the green, I can't really see the green line is a hundred percent yet. Okay, I'm just confirming. Thanks.
Kyle.
Kyle.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thanks, Zulima. Um it really surprises me, not that Mike Cedar is the most popular, but the fact that it's uh, you know, a pretty good deal above the break-even point. Um I was curious, uh ha- ha- have you, Edwin, and uh any of the rest of the team responsible that because of the popularity of Mike Cedar Pool, does it also get a disproportionate amount of the staffing to increase its capacity? Like, is is that a variable or is that one of the things that you guys are considering like throughout the summer? Do you pull lifeguards from other less profitable or less popular pools to keep Mike Cedar more fully staffed considering it's so popular? Or could you speak to a little bit of the strategy, maybe?
It's okay, I'd like to go further to Edwin to see more involved in the day-to-day operations.
Mayor, councillor, this past year, um we were pretty low on lifeguards. So in order to keep all facilities open, we have spread out the lifeguards. Once the aquatic center closed, we were able to get the aquatic center lifeguards out to the other pools. And so that the capacity was higher and almost everybody could get in to a pool if they needed to.
Follow-up, if I could, Edwin, thank you. Um I guess to follow up on that thread, uh has your team ever made a consideration of potentially closing one of the other pools in order to keep Mike Cedar more fully staffed? And could you speak a little of more about?
Mayor, councillor, I, we we have not had that consideration. Um we try to keep all pools open. There are people in this community that, like all different pools or all the pools that we have, so um we would be dealing with just many complaints if we close our pool down for one other pool, so.
Understand, thank you.
Jenna?
I have a question, just because you brought up the um Aquatic Center earlier and the how you were getting all the new things put into it to make it all shiny and new. Um is that a plan, maintenance plan for that, to keep uh Mike Cedar going and looking and keeping the people there at twenty-seven and twenty-eight to keep that blue line up at a hundred and thirty percent? Is what I'm thinking, like, do we have a planted place? Like, did we learn from our mistakes with the Aquatic Center?
Mayor and councillor, yes. I think we're, I think we're doing a much better job in our long-term capital planning. Yeah, um and thanks to your help um in investing money into facilities so that we can maintain them um to a level that will continue to attract customers. Yes, and in fact, um we had one in here that um Edwin pointed out was it more of a maintenance item and not something that would likely draw more visitors? And so we took it out in terms of a revenue generator, but it's an example of an item that would be replaced because of maintenance to keep the facility in good condition. Here, thanks.
That's Lima.
Okay. Uh so the next pool is Paradise Valley. Um and so uh Paradise Valley Pool, I would say, is is probably our second most popular pool, most frequented outdoor pool. Um the slide definitely helps with that, uh extra amenities there. And um the community of Paradise Valley really loves that pool. And so um I I do want to note that uh in the, in July of twenty-one would have been the very start of fiscal year twenty-two, um my off-year twenty-three. Okay, July of twenty-two, which would have been the start of fiscal year twenty-three. Um but we did have to close PV Pool because of the pump failure um for, I think, three weeks. Um and so a lot of those um patrons were redirected to the Aquatic Center and to Washington Park. And 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 back, you've seen kind of a a continued increase in Washington, I think, as a result of that. Um although we we are making some investment in PV Pool. Uh in fact, we just um awarded a bid for a gutter replacement program there. And so um, you know, and we've purchased the pumps to keep that same situation from happening again. So we really feel strongly that 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 customer base will return, uh which was unfortunate, I think, for Washington, but keeps um PV in in its place as as one of the more beloved outdoor pools in the community. And so um it does perform pretty well and with some things that we have in place in terms of um sponsorships and naming rights that we think that we can achieve as well as um uh some events that we think uh would be successful in PV. Uh we can continue to see a good trend with us at least above our cost recovery goal with that facility.
Carter, did you say, want to say anything? Are you good?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. This this particular pool has been one that uh, as Zulima is referencing, has had a lot of uh capital repairs that that has been needed in order to uh to be openable, right? Um when you get to the point, Zulima, that you've kind of gone through the review of the pools and so forth, do you mind reminding us what it is that you have in mind by way of improvements that would be um revenue generating uh as a part of your five-year plan when you get to that point?
Okay, so moving on to Washington. Um so Washington Pool, uh by our rights right now, is actually our least frequented pool. Like I said, they saw a little boost uh because of the closure of PV, and some of that has sustained, although we do expect that it will likely kind of reverse back to the way it was before. Um, you know, because Marion Criner is a free admission pool, um a a lot of the customer base that used to frequent Washington is now redirected to Marion Criner. Um and so we consistently fall well below the cost recovery goal at Washington. Um and, you know, despite some of the efforts that we will absolutely make to to continue to bolster, um, you know, aquatics facilities are very expensive to run, they're expensive to staff, and uh we're just not seeing an opportunity to make a significant uh difference in the operation of Washington. Um we'll we'll strive for that forty-five to fifty-five percent cost recovery, but um, you know, we just want to be honest and transparent that getting much beyond that is probably going to be pretty challenging without making significant capital investment, which I've been to Washington Pool lately, you know, um the building is probably the biggest um problem with that pool. It's it's definitely what needs to be addressed, but it's absolutely a a significant capital cost that we would have to make in replacing that building.
Lisa, did you have something?
Um on that Washington Pool, were we going to do something with the building or the pool in phase two or three? Or is there something that we were looking at trying to do with that?
Uh Mayor, councillor, yes. So we are, my hall of this, in the midst of a Washington Park Revival Project um that thankfully has been partially funded by the Land and Water Conservation Fund and the grant that we received from that program. Um of course, phase one uh is pickleball and baseball lighting replacements. Phase two, uh phase one could not uh burden the cost of replacing the tennis courts. And so phase two will be tennis courts. Phase three, we will look at doing something with the aquatics facility, uh which, in my opinion, from a timing standpoint, works really well because our Parks and Recreation Master Plan should be done by that time. Um and I'm hoping that that will inform some good decision-making in terms of what we do with uh Washington Park Pool and going into the future. So uh so yes, we did, in in all of the neighborhood meetings that were conducted as part of the Washington Park Revival um public engagement process, the pool lovers came out in force and said we were really able to improve the building. Um and so that that is on the plan, assuming that it aligns with our plans and future visions.
Thank you.
Great, uh so then the last pool uh is Marion Criner. Of course, this is our free admission pool for the community. And so uh right now, we hover under four to two to two to four percent cost recovery for that facility. Um we do have a couple of proposals um on how we could increase that. Um the primary one being starting to offer lessons at Mike's, uh excuse me, at Marion Criner Pool. Uh so right now, we don't offer swim instruction at Marion Criner. Uh we found that some citizenry was reluctant to go to North Casper for swim lessons. Um however, we're hoping to change that sentiment. And in fact, Edwin's plan is to try to partner with some um local businesses, particularly daycares, to see if they're interested in in bringing swim instructors to Marion Criner. So uh so we're optimistic about that program, being able to generate some revenue for that facility. Uh in addition, uh we do want to at least propose the idea of of applying a rate. Uh right now, it's built into the model as fifty cents for admission in FY twenty-five and uh another fifty cents in FY twenty-seven to make a dollar to enter the pool. Um that rate discussion will be coming later after we have an opportunity to to really um build out the um the rate models for each of the individual pools and come back to you with a proposal. But uh in the master plan, that is how it's proposed right now, and that is the effect. I can quickly show you what it looks like. You know, we didn't charge anything. We would consistently, even with swim le- lessons, not exceed fifteen percent cost recovery at this facility.
Any questions for Marion Criner? Yeah, Amber.
I would just make a comment. Um it it seems to me that now that we have this data broken out, um considering that we have supported keeping the rate, you know, free or or in your proposals very, very low at this pool, I'm I'm not sure a cost recovery goal of that degree makes sense um for this pool. So I would advocate that if that's the position of council, we want to continue to retain that lower rate, which would be my personal position, that we reduce the cost recovery goal for that specific facility as well, just so that we can better track and analyze like specifically what's going on there in a more reasonable way.
Mayor, councillor, that makes total sense and and understand that the cost recovery goal was established for the fund.
Right.
And so I just applied it to all the pools across the board. Um and and so we can certainly um do that analysis and bring recommendations if that's the council's desire uh in terms of cost recovery for each of the individual pool.
Is council okay with in that direction for this? Okay, Carter, is that okay if we make that recommendation?
Yeah.
Okay, sorry. Be great, thank you.
Okay, so to follow up uh on the city manager's question, I guess, um a few of the items that are listed here. So um for Paradise Valley Pool, uh in FY twenty-seven, we are looking at some improvements to that facility, uh not only a few maintenance items, but enhancements that we think will um bolster some um additional attendance. Right now, we're estimating only about um ten percent, which isn't huge, but um but we do hope that uh after the gutters are replaced and 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 we're able to get um some other enhancements done, including slide conditioning, um that that will be able to increase um some attendance there. At Mike Cedar, we're still pretty new. We're not planning to add any amenities. That's that's strictly maintenance at this point. Uh right now, we're actually not looking at anything in the next five years for Washington until we have a better idea from the master plan, uh what our strategy should be there. Um and at Marion Criner, um we are not looking at any amenities. Of course, you probably remember that this splash pad, there's fairly new amenity. And as I drive by there daily during the summer to my office, um it is very popular. There are kids at the splash pad almost all the time. So um so we do feel like it has increased attendance to that facility. Um in terms of the Casper Family Aquatic Center, we do have a proposal right now in the five-year plan uh for some enhancements um in that outside deck. Um so may remember from your tour that you have the indoor area, and then there's some doors that go out to a concrete patio. Right now, we have some planter boxes that are used by our camp kids sometimes to to plant a garden. Um but we're really looking to repurpose that space uh into concession space, which we think would be popular um at the aquatic center, uh as well as hopefully some outdoor water amenity out there that would attract more people to the aquatic center during the summer. The complaint during the summer, of course, is we don't want to be inside, we want to be outside. Um but we think that we could get people to come and enjoy the aquatic center. We had some water amenity outside, um and then the addition of concessions should also help all year round uh with some revenue generation there. So those are the big ones in the next four years. We certainly have plans beyond that, some of them quite sizable, um and we will work to um hone those in and and really, like I said, focus on more return on investment items than than wish list sort of items.
Go ahead, Amber.
Um Zulina, on the concession front, um is there opportunity um to possibly capitalize on the other users of that adjacent space, the pickleball and tennis and all that sort of thing for concessions to? Would that concession be accessible from folks not inside the aquatic center? How are you imagining that?
Uh Mayor and councillor, we don't think we're quite there yet, but we have talked about that as an option. And, you know, can we create a space that people in the park or, you know, playing tennis? Or now, the tennis complex will have its own concession, run by the school district. So um but we're open to all of those ideas. And in fact, have some other um capital uh ideas on the rec center side that would lend really well to that in the form of um to outdoor space to use for fitness. So I I think there's definitely opportunity there for us to expand. Uh similarly, at Washington, I think there's some opportunity to expand if we were to look at concessions serving, you know, the tennis courts, the pickleball courts uh and other parkgoers rather than just pool attendees. And so those are all ideas that we've been considering and we'll continue to bet out a little bit more.
Steve.
This is a question kind of as a follow-up to Amber's, but uh you had mentioned that the tennis facility is going to have their own concession stand. Now, will that only be manned when the schools are using that facility? Or will it be manned the hours you would be manning the the Aquatic Center concession stand?
Uh Mayor, councillor, unfortunately, I can't say with certainty, but my assumption would be that it would be manned during high school athletic events.
Oh, I saw, I noticed Carter shaking his head there. So it sounds like that still may be an opportunity then for the rest of the year and definitely during the summer. Uh so, okay, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Go ahead.
Honestly, that's all I have unless there's any other questions.
I don't think so. Everybody asked questions in between, so you're good.
All the time.
No, no, just just good. Thank you for letting us interrupt you and entertaining our questions. Um and yeah, absolutely, Amber.
Um I just want to um encourage the council to continue to advocate um for your efforts at the single-point failure um identification and, you know, budget strategy to to reduce the impact of those sorts of events. I I thinking specifically to the um Paradise Valley um closure. I remember seeing a comment online and somebody's like, oh, that sounds like an important piece to keep on in stock. I was like, yeah, it does. So I would advocate, and you know, my personal opinion is that um, you know, we continue to support a budget structure that allows for some of those things to be on hand so that we we mitigate the impact of those sorts of instances. So thanks for moving that direction and and continue to support you in that.
Kyle.
Thanks, Mayor. Um to councillor Pollack's point about that, I thought about asking a question along those lines earlier. From a public services perspective, keeping the pools open, making sure that pools don't go down, I totally agree uh the single points of failure, we should uh, you know, try to avoid them. But I thought, could you remind me? I thought when the PV Pool was closed, we actually realized a cost savings. Because, you know, uh most of these operations require constant subsidy. When we close the pool, we don't have to uh incur those expenditures. Could you remind, you know, uh remind me a little bit about some of those?
Mayor, councillor, the reality is you're right. A lot of times, we will actually see a savings because we're not staffing pools. Um it it really comes down to being able to provide the service to the community at a level that they've grown to expect from us. And uh, you know, my background before this was was utilities. And, you know, I came from sewer, where you wouldn't dream of not having a backup pump. Obviously, the consequence's a little higher there, but um but so when I stepped into this role and realized that we don't really have a mechanism for identifying those single points and and addressing them quickly, um that's when we kind of started doing those evaluations. And so uh we'll certainly weigh it with, you know, is this critical in terms of will it shut down the operation? Or will it just impact an amenity that's nice to have but not necessary to be open? Um and then, you know, make some adjustments there in terms of our capital planning so that we're balancing that, understanding that, you know, these facilities are subsidized. We are trying to be mindful of the capital that we're asking you to invest.
Thank you, John. Good enough. Uh I believe our current one cycle, we had allocated three hundred thousand dollars a year to the pools. Is that correct? One point two million, I think, over the course of the whole cycle?
Uh I believe it's three twenty-five a year.
Three twenty-five, yeah, I believe that's right, because I think it was one point three. Um is it fair to say that the three hundred and twenty-five covers all of these gaps between uh break-even? Or i- is there funding coming from other places? Or is there funding coming from other places to backfill? And what is that amount?
Mayor Counselor, so unfortunately, that does not cover the entirety of the subsidy. We actually have general fund dollars as well as our perpetual care fund that contributes to covering the subsidy.
Do you know off the top of your head what goes on there?
I don't. I don't suppose you know. I don't know. So we can give you those.
I would be curious what the overall subsidy is at pools. I think it's good enough.
Mr. Mayor Counselor, just to be clear, one of the budget strategies that you adopted back in May, and of course formally with the adoption of the budget in June, was that a lot of the subsidies for the recreational enterprises and so forth would be borne in part by the direct distribution fund and not necessarily the general fund anymore. And so while you do have perpetual care and you do have one cent and so forth, supporting a lot of these enterprises, you don't really have the general fund anymore to contribute those dollars. And so nonetheless, we can get you some math that would break all that down.
I would be interested, I don't know if that's in interest anyone else shares, but council's okay?
If we get that information? Yeah, that sounds great, all right. Anything else for Zulima? All right, thank you so much, we appreciate it. Thank you guys for coming down and joining us, thank you. All right, moving on. Oh, did you need a direction for us, just to continue moving forward? Is that what?
That really was it, yeah.
Just to move forward?
I think so.
What we're doing, okay. Yeah, you bet. Unpaid utility ordinance amendment, Carter?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Counselors. We do have some changes that we'd like to recommend for your consideration as it relates to the management of utility billing and collection. Collection being sort of the word of emphasis that I would have you consider in this discussion. The reason being is that a lot of the language that you're seeing being proposed for change is that we have a disproportionately large bad debt expense associated with our utilities that I have asked Jill to give us strategies to reduce. You're probably aware that that particular bad debt expense can be anywhere from two hundred to two hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year. And I would tell you, that is too large for an enterprise of this nature and this scope. And so Jill has been dutifully considering ways in which that could be reduced. Not only is it bad debt expense, but I would also suggest when we send bills to collection, we lose a portion of that in order to pay the collection agency to chase down these bills that are, you know, in defunct status, if you will. So if you will, as you have this conversation tonight, please consider the suggestions that we're offering, really as a means to try to gain some control with regard to those numbers that seem to be ballooning and the strategies that are associated with doing so. And so with that, we do have Ms. Johnson and Ms. Coyle here tonight to walk us through some of these ideas. And without a doubt, the purpose of this discussion is so that you can hear these ideas, ask questions, give us homework and direction that would prepare us for hopefully a formal consideration of this program here in a future regular business meeting.
Questions?
Let me, well, if we can get Ms. Johnson and Ms. Coyle.
I missed it for a few seconds, went to the bathroom, and I'm thinking, ah.
Just really.
Ten like I know what's going on. Thanks for the introduction. I know, I got to get back in the saddle, it's been a minute.
Mayor, Counselors, thank you for having me tonight. I would like to introduce Randy Coyle. Randy is our accounts receivable supervisor, and she has been instrumental in helping to develop these strategies to reduce these receivable write-offs in collections. So she's also here in case I can't answer your questions, they're going to be all hers. So as you saw from the memo that we provided to you, the amounts of money that we send to collections and that we write off every year is pretty significant. When we write off things, it causes the ratepayers within the city to subsidize these people who aren't paying. So we're trying to reduce this so that we don't have that coming forward anymore. So the changes that we are suggesting are just additional tools to help us to collect money. So our current process, in case you're not aware, anytime a bill, a utility bill, is passed to you by forty-five days, we disconnect your water, so your water services go away. So if it stays disconnected and you still don't pay, after sixty days, we'll send it to collection. If after five years, you still have not paid, we write off your bill. So that's kind of the process at this time. So some of the changes that we would like to propose, one of them relates to deposits. So recently, we came and requested some changes to the deposit amounts. However, in the ordinance itself, we can only charge a deposit to a tenant. We don't charge it to any new account. So if you have somebody who moves into the city, they buy a house, they are typically not charged the deposit. So if you look at our memo, you'll see that not only tenants don't pay, but owners don't pay as well. So we end up sending both types of accounts to collections. So we would like to propose that we charge a deposit to everyone who comes in and requests a new account. So they would still get the same benefits that a tenant would get, where if you have a good payment history with the utility, we would waive that deposit. If you came in and you signed up for ACH, we would reduce that deposit. So we would provide you with all the same things that we provide to the tenant, but we would just charge it to everyone. Okay, we talked a little bit about ACHs. And if we were to reduce that rate, when somebody came in and said, yes, I'd like to sign up for that, and then the next month, they say, oh, we're going to cancel that because I've gotten my reduced rate, we don't have any way to now push that back up to the regular rate for the deposit. So in the language that we are proposing, that is part of what we are requesting is that if someone were to cancel that ACH after getting that reduced deposit, that we could come back and say, no, now that you've canceled it, or if we try and do an ACH and it gets returned for non-payment, that we would be able to do the regular deposit for them. Okay, something else in the proposed language, we would like to require an application. So currently, we don't always collect enough information that when somebody doesn't pay and we send them to collections, we don't have enough information to give the collection agency a way to actually go after them or to find them or to be able to collect money from them. So right now, we're still drafting the application. It's currently looking like a three-page application. It would have the owner of the account on the front. It would have our ordinance and some of the responsibilities that the person would need to sign. It just says, I understand that these are the things that I am responsible for. And then on the third page, if you're a tenant, we're also going to require that they put the owner of the property on there and a property manager, if there is one. What this will do for us is this will help us. So if it's a tenant and they are the responsible party on the front, if they become delinquent, we can take the people who are on the back, the owner and the property manager, and send a delinquent notice to them as well. So not only is the tenant getting it, but the property owner and manager are getting it also. So in addition to that, we were also hoping that we could put in some language that would allow us to not set up a new account until the delinquent account is paid for. So for instance, if we have a tenant who comes in, they set up their account, they don't pay, they leave. The next tenant comes in, they set up their account, they don't pay and they leave. This would be a way that we could stop that cycle. So within that cycle, when the first tenant came in, they didn't pay it, we would notify the owner, the property manager, the tenant would leave. Hopefully, the owner could collect that from their deposit, pay it, and then the next tenant could be eligible to be set up. When we talk about the landlord and the owner, there is something called a landlord agreement. I think you guys have all heard about this, we've talked to you about it before. What the landlord agreement is designed to do is when the tenant leaves, the landlord agreement, if it's, if the account's been set up completely, the tenant lets us know they're leaving, they go ahead and leave, we do a final bill. And then there's a little pop-up box that shows up on the account that says, there's a landlord agreement on this. And we just take that account and move it into the landlord's account. So it's supposed to go seamlessly, it doesn't always. Sometimes, we don't know that the tenant has left until a delinquent notice goes out and then the owner comes back and says, oh, they're not there anymore. It's like, oh, that's not helpful. But anyway, this is hopefully how that landlord agreement is supposed to work. Is when the tenant leaves, the landlord would then pick up the bill. They would know that there is a bill for the previous tenant. We would be able to collect a deposit or secure the deposit amount, and we would continue on from there. None of these changes within this proposal will change the landlord agreement. It will remain as is. The only thing that we may choose to do is add a separate box in there that would say, yes, I would like to get a copy of the delinquent notice, or no, I don't.
So my question, trying, understanding that landlord agreement, if I'm understanding that correctly, can we just, I'll get a lot of hate mail on this, but can we just make it mandatory for if you have a rental property, that you have to sign a landlord agreement?
It has not been mandatory, it has been optional. And again, the landlord agreement is just for when the tenant leaves, instead of disconnecting their service, we transfer it into the owner's name or the property manager or whoever is responsible for that. So then when the next tenant comes, then it would transfer from the landlord or the owner back into the next tenant. So it's designed to be kind of a seamless thing where it doesn't disconnect the services. If you don't have a landlord agreement, then when the tenant moves out, we give them a short notice and then the other services are disconnected.
Can I follow up?
You're good.
So can the property, can we just make the property owner, like all landlords, if they're going to intentionally rent out their property, they're already taking a risk as a renter anyways, can we assess, make them pay upfront, all of the utilities, not upfront, but pay the utilities, period? And then they can get it reimbursed through the technical?
Great question, we do not have that set up as something that's mandatory. Within the language that we are proposing, we are proposing that the owner be responsible for the utilities at their property. So the owner, of course, can through a contract, such as a rental agreement, require the tenant to pay that. And that's fine, I mean, that's something they can come in and set up. We charge the deposit, we put the owner on the account as well, so that there is some overlap. However, when the tenant leaves, if they have, they've left a bill, it would be the responsibility of the owner to pay it.
And just say, take the tenant out of it completely and just make the property owner pay for it.
We do not require that currently.
Well, then you could put a lien on the property, right? If they don't pay it, because it's the property, the landowner's property.
I do not believe that it is liable in one way, that would be a legal question.
Mayor Counselor, I'm unaware of any specific authority that would allow us to lien it for unpaid. You'd have to reduce it to judgment and you can certainly place a judgment lien, but that's probably more complicated than going to collections.
He tried.
Trying to.
The landlord agreement is supposed to be something in place for the city and to, I think that to help the city to facilitate getting those bills paid. Not all property managers do that. I do that just because we have a ton of landlord agreements with the city, but they're not working the way that they need to be. It's when the tenant takes the water out of the name, the water gets shut off. And then we have to call the city again and say, why did you shut the water off? And then you guys turn it back on. And so it's not seamless yet, but it's supposed to be seamless so that if the tenant then didn't pay the bill or whatever, I would assume that then, because we have the landlord agreement, all of that bill would then come to us. And then we pay the bill.
So just to clarify, the charges from the tenant do not automatically switch over to the owner.
But with this, it would though, correct?
It will not. So the tenant will still have their own account. The property owner or the property manager would get just the delinquent notice. When the tenant moves out, they still have their account that they would be required to pay. So when we do the final billing, we would notify the property owner and the property manager, if there was one, and the tenant, that this is your final bill, this is how much you owe. The owner then or the property manager would determine, am I going to pay this out of the security deposit? And then the tenant won't have to deal with it, or the tenant can pay it and I'll refund your entire security deposit. So that would be something that would be optional to them. But the amount of money which has been charged to the tenant would not automatically move to the owner, just the new charges.
So say you have them living in there and they're not paying their utilities.
If they are not paying their utilities and they live there. So when we did the delinquent notice, that notice would go to the tenant and to the property owner and the property manager, if there was one. Following that, if the utilities get shut off, they would be turned off. Again, you guys would be notified. Hopefully, at that point, there would be some way that we could get that tenant to pay or they would become a different, there would be a different option at that point.
Steve, you have something?
Just so that the mayor and vice mayor would know, I did not prompt Janet into saying that comment about sending it to the property owner. The reason I'm saying that, Janet, is I brought that up in the pre-meeting, that that's what we ought to do. So I wanted to make sure that they knew that I hadn't talked to you and put you up to that. So thank you, because I am totally in favor of exactly what you were going to say. It ought to go to the property owner and be done with it.
Yeah, you'd direct pay the property owner, no, no waiting. Would you like me to add that in for the proposed changes? I'd be happy to do so.
Well, we'll take it one thing at a time.
I guess to this point, you said that the landlord agreements aren't mandatory. But maybe this is a question for the city attorney instead. Why, why is it not mandatory for that to switch to the property owner or property manager? You know, I guess, why is that not the status quo? I imagine there's reasoning.
It is the option of the owner. So if they choose not to have the services continue, maybe just let them become disconnected when the tenant left. It's only when the tenant leaves that the landlord agreement comes into effect, where it is supposed to be that when the tenant leaves, they do their final bill and then the owner picks up the next set of charges until he gets a new tenant, he or she gets a new tenant. It is at the option of the owner.
Go ahead.
So landlord agreement is not tied to the money. So the bills that are produced for the tenant does not then get transferred to the landlord current landlord agreement, the way it is. All it does is that when they leave, the water either gets shut off because they say that they're leaving, which is the standard process within a move-out process. We ask that the water be shut off. With the landlord in its intent, if it was working the way it was supposed to, obviously, I have some work to do on that. We would then move the account out of the tenant's name. we would then move the account out of the tenant's name into the landlord's name, and the services would not get to disconnect it. So I think that there's some confusion in that, that current landlord agreement is tied to the funds owed, and it has nothing to do with the funds owed. It's just the services being turned on or stay, staying in stated.
Got something?
Yeah, Mayor Counselor, so just to respond to Counselor Gamros' point, I, I'm unaware of any legal impediments to make it mandatory, but to Ms. Coyle's uh, comments, it, it, the way I read this, and they can tell me if I'm off-base, but it's, it's almost an accommodation to the owner to can uh, uh, ensure kind of some consistency of water service, so you're not starting, stopping, starting, stopping. Making it mandatory wouldn't, to their point, increase our ability to collect or then shift that financial burden on the owner.
This might be for Brandy, but basically what that landlord agreement does, is it eliminates the turn-on fees for the next tenant or for the landlord, if they want to do some work, so you're cutting out that, turn-off, turn-on fee by doing the landlord agreement. Is that correct?
Mayor, Counselor, uh, the turn-on fees only for delinquents, turn-ons, or if they have an emergency turn-off and it's not turned on within twenty-four hours, we don't charge that fee for when somebody comes in and signs up with their service. We absorb that cost because it's a service to have them in that property.
Okay. I thought maybe that was a way around the, the turn-off fees.
I, I think it helps when they're in there trying to clean it up, to clean up the property and that kind of thing, to have the running water.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, I apologize. I, for some reason, I'm having a hard time wrapping my head around all this. In the case of a tenant that lets their account go delinquent, and they are moving, that they move out, uh, you know, in, you use the example, we send a delinquent notice, but oh, hey, this person's moved on. Uh, it sounds like historically, we would go in and we turn that water off. When it needs to be turned on for the new tenant, who absorbs that cost? Is it the new tenant? Is it the property owner or the property manager, or is it us?
There is not a cost related to that. So when we go and turn on the service, um, it, it is just part of them getting a new account. With the changes that we are proposing, we would not turn on that new service until that delinquent bill was paid. Whether it's paid by the tenant's deposit or paid by the owner, doesn't matter. It would just be paid prior to us setting up that new service.
See, that's my mind twister too. So people are going to get, so, the last, that's where it kind of went back to where I said, like, why can't we just straight across the board, do the property owner paying for it, because it feels like, if that tenant, they're taking a risk anyways on having a tenant there, and whether or not they pay their bill, if they go delinquent, then the tenant has to pay it before you can get the other tenant in there, anyway. So, the owner would pay it regardless. So that's why I'm like, can't we just cut all the tenants out, period, and just have the property owner? Pay it, and then they can up their rent and accommodate the charges for, you know what I mean, like, have the owner direct taken out of the property owners renting it.
Well, so some of it, they have a deposit. So the deposit will cover some of the bills. So not all of the bills, no. So there's a deposit, so, so if they have a delinquent bill, so the deposit would cover some of the, the payment that hasn't been paid. And then, so, I don't know, depends on how much that bill would be. But like in this case, then if it's delinquent and they owe it, then they just, so you're thinking it's everybody, and it's not. It's, it's, it's a lot less than that then, so just a few people then would be given to the property owner or property manager. And then we would take, we would take care of the bills so that the unit could be re-rented again.
Right.
It would also depend on how long that tenant had been there. So typically, we keep the deposit for one year. So if they have been an excellent payer for one year, and they get their deposit applied to their bill, they're there for another six months, and then they just decide not to pay anymore. At the end, we would not have a deposit to be able to apply to the account at that point. Um, because it would have already been applied after the year was over. So at that point, it would go to the owner if the tenant didn't want to pay.
So Jill, I just want to calculate at a time. I don't want, I want you guys to finish your presentation first. So do you have, how much more do you think of your presentation?
Just a few more, if, if that's okay.
Yeah, can you hold, yeah, you can hold tight. Let's, let's let Jill, Brandy finish their presentation, and then, because there's like, it sounds like there's a lot of good discussion. So let's try to get the full frame here, and then we'll do that. But that's fair.
Thank you.
You bet.
Um, so the last item that, that we believe will help us in um, redo things on these receivables, is the payment arrangement requirements. So not everybody who requests a payment arrangement can get one. So if you've had fifteen payment arrangements and you haven't completed any of them, we typically will not give you another one. So within the ordinance, we've also listed out the requirements of what, what you need to be able to do, or what you have done in the past, which would enable you to, apply for and receive a payment arrangement from the city. So those are outlined within the ordinance. Um, there are a few housekeeping items within these changes. Um, when we um, do leak adjustments, so like if somebody has a leak within their system, their toilet runs for three days and nobody knows about it until you get the bill, we do, in ordinance, provide for a leak adjustment. So the leak adjustment was very difficult to calculate and to explain to the customer. So we have um, made that much simpler. Um, Brandy, in fact, had developed this whole spreadsheet that you'd have to put numbers in, to uh, make the calculation come out correctly. So we've, we've gotten rid of that. It, it's more just a percentage that we will um, reduce the water um, by. And again, it would be something that um, is equitable to everyone, and is very easy to explain and understand to the customer. Um, we also, in, when you come in and you establish new sewer service, currently, uh, ordinance has it at sixty-five hundred gallons is what we recharge you for. Our system um, does not allow us to charge in increments of less than a thousand. So the sixty-five hundred does not work. We cannot manage that within our system, so we have adjusted that to the seven thousand. Um, the next change that we made, again, just housekeeping items within ordinance, it says that we will take three months after January first to calculate your sewer rate as an average of three months. We are going to define those as January, February, and March, which are outside of the um, watering season. Can I keep going?
Yes.
Mine was regarding that specific.
Okay, I'll, I'll allow it. Go ahead.
By doing it in January, February, and March, you're giving the snowbirds a break, and the rest of us are having to pick up for that. Because they're going January, February, March, so they're not using any water.
Sort of snowbirds? If I could defer that to Brandy.
People that need for the winter.
I'd love to get back to you on that, because I, I know that we're not doing that, but I don't know how we calculate it for the snowbirds. Because they're not here for us to calculate a number. It's likely based off of um, the next couple months within there. But I don't know the answer to that, so I'd have to get back to you.
That was the only thing I was interested in, because I don't want to be paying for the people to leave town.
They have a sewer rate, I promise.
Okay.
I don't know what it is, but they have one, I promise.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Jill, Brandy.
And then um, when, when we have people who um, keep their irrigation on all summer, but they're not here, they want to remove their trash can. And um, we actually, within the um, ordinances under section eight point three two point oh four oh, we do not allow them to do that. We require every active account who um, has trash service within the city, defined trash area, and we require them to have trash service if they have an active account. So we are just reiterating that within the billing um, ordinance. And then finally, um, we are proposing um, that we charge a fee if somebody would like to have a paper statement. So if you saw in the memo, the, the last three years, our um, charges for printing and postage of twenty thousand bills that we do every month has significantly increased. We have the ability to provide electronic um, bills, and we have the ability to, not print and postage all of those bills. Um, so we are looking to, potentially um, come back to you with a resolution which would um, give some kind of a fee, if we were to be able to put this into the ordinance. And that is the end.
Awesome. I got Kyle and I got Mike.
And I have another thing right along with that last item.
Thanks, Mayor. Uh, I hope I'm in the majority that would love to save a quarter million dollars a year on paper billing. And I imagine when you come forward with a recommendation or a resolution, you will have thought about how somebody, you know, uh, gets their free pass at the landfill or something, you know, there's gotta be a way to track that. So I imagine any resolution uh, will come with those, uh, considerations as well. Um, again, I'm just, I'm struggling so hard with this one. Uh, you can go ahead and let Steve go while I like, put some words in my thoughts.
Okay, I actually got Mike first and then Amber. So go ahead, Mike.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Um, Jill, I want to say, just say thank you very much for this work. It looks like great work to me, but, um, I, I did want to say as well that uh, I'm particularly happy to see the, the clauses about, the payment arrangements. Um, I think you've put some, some good guidelines in there, that it's, it's fair and it protects the city. Um, I, I am curious about kind of what your thoughts are, uh, your staff thoughts about um, it, it, about going about, maybe letting people know that these arrangements are available. Do you wait till the, to the uh, the user contacts you? How, how does that work? How would that work? Have you thought about that?
Actually, if I could defer that one to Brandy, um, her staff actually manages a lot of the calls that come in for people that have difficulty, so. So Mayor, Counselor, we do typically wait till they contact us, but recently, we've had um, a lot of marketing, I guess. I don't know if it's marketing. Communication out to our citizens about the different opportunities that people have to receive assistance. We have worked really hard to get something on our website, so it's out there on our website, uh, the different local, uh, agencies that will provide assistance, as well as who to contact if you need a payment arrangement. And so we do have that communication out there, and recently, we've been doing some social media, type communication as well regarding that.
Thank you, Brandy. And Ray, I have a, I have a follow-up just real quick as well. Um, just, uh, ju, I just wanted to say, I'm, I'm a little uncomfortable with the, the paying for the, the print, uh, copy of the bill. I just know there are so many um, senior citizens and so forth who are, not technology savvy, who, who don't have the capacity or the capability of, of getting that online. I mean, I certainly understand the cost savings to that, but I, I really, am uncomfortable with charging someone for a print, uh, mail statement. I think, uh, perhaps we could be proactive about encouraging folks to have those online payments. Um, but I'm, that just doesn't sit well with me to, to charge for a, um, a paper statement. So that's all I had. Thank you.
Great, Brandy.
As a follow-up, Mayor, Counselor, um, I did actually do a paperless billing campaign, uh, a few months ago, and it amounted to one thousand-ish people signing up for it. So I didn't see a very big return on that. I even paid for a few Facebook book ads and that kind of thing, and I probably lost more money than I gained within the paperless billing campaign. So, hey, I did try that avenue.
Well, thank you. Amber.
Thank you. Um, uh, thanks, thanks for the presentation. I, I feel pretty good about um, the direction here generally. I do. Um, yeah, I'm, I'm kind of kicking myself after um, the last discussion where we talked about some of the specific rates related to water and delinquency and turning things back on that I, uh, you know, having gone home and thought about that a little bit further, I, I feel like, you know, philosophically, I want to make it easy for people to get their utilities turned back on, if they've fallen behind for whatever reason, that we don't, increase the number of barriers facing somebody to be able to regain service and stability in that arena. Understanding the need to balance that with, you know, mitigating the risk to the city, and so um, I, I don't have a specific recommendation around that, um, though I will say one particular area of this that stands out to me, and maybe something that we can, um, negotiate a little bit to make it slightly more friendly. There is the uh, under section E, subsection two, well, actually, it's new. Yeah, they're crossed out, but um, it, top of page four, um, so notification, if they are signed up for ACH, um, it's suggesting that um, if that payment tries to run and it's unsuccessful, um, it looks to me like their service would be immediately disconnected. Um, and in order to reconnect service, um, we've added a turn-on fee, um, any sort of waived amount of deposit that, uh, you know, may have been gained, the ACH, any delinquent charges. I wonder if um, there's room in there for some sort of grace period, um, you know, seven days or three days, if, if that payment, you know, that could be as simple as like somebody's payroll was delayed or something, and the charge tried to process, and now not only they owe the bill, but they also owe whatever the waived amount was, and they also owe a turn, turn-on fee that had originally been waived. So, you know, without, without opening up the city to a significant, you know, added risk in that situation, I wonder if we might be able to, build in some sort of grace period for folks not to immediately be hit with the bill plus, um, which I think could be destabilizing in some situations that, you know, if somebody is living paycheck to paycheck, um, which I could see in this situation, you know, where that ACH was, was declined for whatever reason. I, I, I think it might behoove us to, to try to help stabilize the situation rather than um, potentially destabilize it with additional fees. So um, you know, I, I would, I would, advocate that, you know, one specific example, but any other spots where there's, there's room for that, you know, uh, opportunity to, to re-engage with a person, to get things squared away before, you know, I think trying to incentivize people to pay those bills with fees is not that effective, right? If they could pay the bill, they'd probably pay the bill, in many, many, many cases. So I, I just want to, you know, philosophically, that's sort of where I'm at. I, I'm wishing that I had expressed that when we set the fees, because I think there are a couple, decisions that we made, where it was like, man, like, maybe we could have, we could have changed our philosophy just a bit, achieved the same result, and, and made it more likely that people would be able to regain their utility services, you know, quicker and, and easier, and with less disruption to their lives. So, that's my only thought, and that's the only specific example I see it in here. Um, and I, I think, um, you know, elsewise, I, I, especially uh, supportive of uh, gathering the property owner um, information as well, because I've, I feel like that's a precarious position to be in as a property owner, if you're not aware that um, those bills are accumulating and, and, you know, that's, makes it difficult to make a decision to retain a, um, deposit or something like that, if you're finding out after the fact, or, you know, that sort of thing. So I think that's a great step.
Got something?
Yes.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, Steve.
I was just waiting. Sorry. No, I, Mr. Bond brought it up, and I will reiterate it, is I would hope that there would be some way that, some of the elderly or some of the less fortunate that don't have the internet, the email, they're, as was mentioned, living paycheck to paycheck, and they're having to decide, am I gonna pay my water bill? Am I gonna buy food? And not knowing what that bill is when it's ACH'd out of their account, uh, it may bounce, because they're trying to balance. So I would love to see some way that they could come in and petition, at no cost to them, to receive a paper bill. I realize that you're, let's, let's, do away with them campaign didn't work well, but um, a lot of your older people prefer paper. You know, I don't care, and I've tried reading the, the E edition of the newspaper, but there's something about, having that newspaper, and there's something about a paper bill. Now, yeah, I'm willing to go ahead and go along with that, but there are other people with your online billing, but by the same token, there are other people that it just does not work for. And those are the people that we are trying to protect. So I would like to see some method for them to be able to come in and, and be able to opt out of. and be able to opt out of it. And not just a blanket opt-out, but a legitimate, hey, I, I just can't do this.
Mayor?
Yes. Please, yeah, absolutely.
You know, we, we've been talking a lot about a fee to have a paper statement. What if we, instead of doing the, the stick, do the carrot? So instead of having a fee for people getting a paper bill, have a discount for people who do electronic? Think that would, that would address your concerns?
Oh, yeah.
And it may still be able to help us transition a lot of people away from the um cost of printing a bill every time. Would that be something that you would consider? I mean, when you talk about doing a reduction, you're reducing the fee to print things too. So I mean, the budgetary impact would be
Whatever.
Yeah, that, I, I was gonna raise that is, is have you consider or, you know, run any modeling on what an incentive program versus a fee program would look like? And I mean, I guess to my point earlier, I might tend more towards the incentive philosophy rather than the, the fee-based philosophy um in this case as well.
Steve's in, he just switched to paperless. Did y'all hear it? He got a discount.
If it's gonna save me whatever it's gonna cost me for a paper bill, I'll do it. I like it even better when you're gonna reduce my bill. It's an incentive, so heck, yeah.
That's why you're skiing still.
Do anything for ten.
So that's why you're skiing still. Retake it.
Go ahead, Jenna. Then Kyle.
So I am thinking, okay, I'm, I'm with Steve though. I, I, I appreciate paper because I'm old and I'm in that generation too. But
You're not old.
I am, because I'm still paper and I'm having a hell of a time with like e-textbooks and stuff, right? And so point is, is that um I do like the idea of what Steve was saying, but um, having the ability for those that do need that paper that they can opt in for it or, you know, and let me just give them their paper things. But initially, um, I would say just make everybody, make it paperless, you know, because that is, it's cutting your costs immediately. And then the ones who want the paper, they can opt in. It's still gonna cut our postage back to maybe where it is for the little amount of people who decide to opt in is what I'm thinking if they want the paper. Um, and it, I, the way I look at it is like times are changing. Nobody likes change, but literally everybody is going to paperless. I have to pay a lot of bills online. Now being, I never wanted to. I'm trying to get used to that too. And I'm looking at it as more of like a credit card fee or it's a convenience fee is what you get for the paper now. It's just kind of reversed, you know? So I'm all for it, but I do like your incentive idea too, as a discount, but I do paperless now anyways. That was my two cents. I'm for paperless and opting in and incentives.
Kyle.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, and yeah, I would agree. I think that's a really great compromise, because um, I think a- anyone that sends me a bill charges a fee to receive it in paper. Um, so I don't think we'd be out of line in that regard. However, I really like the idea of the incentive. I think it's a good compromise. Um, my question, Jill, is you mentioned a circumstance earlier, and I don't know how widespread this is. Maybe this is more the exception and not the rule, but it sounds like after one year, people's initial deposit is then applied to their bill and the deposit is sent, is essentially reabsorbed back. Um, I was curious what the rationale for that is and why could we not, uh, just keep that deposit on the account until they end up just, you know, closing the account? Uh, what's the reason after one year it's applied towards their account?
Um, after one year, they've established good payment history with us. So if they are delinquent at any time during that one year, we do not um, give up the deposit.
Right.
We extend it. So um, it's showing that they um have been a good, a good payer, so.
Do you have any idea how many people have established that they're a good payer and then go delinquent after the fact? Do you have any idea what proportion of people that is?
I do not have statistics on that. I can happen to do some work for you if you'd like.
Uh, no, I was just curious if you had enough to talk to your head then, Eugene.
Okay, so there was a couple of suggestions that were made. That sounds like I, I wanna make sure that that's recorded and that we're do you want us to take the whole chunk of it and say, you know, what, we're good with the majority of it, but it sounded like, from what I heard about the, about the paperless, it sounded like one area. Um, and then Amber had made the uh suggestion about the E two notification, um, about maybe looking at some type of, um, what was it you said?
A grace period.
Grace period for some people, because it sounds like once that happens, you get your thing just shut off and that your services are just shut off, but could there be a grace period for certain individuals?
All individuals?
All individuals, rather. Thank you. Sorry, of all, of all customers.
I think that, Brandy, do you wanna explain how the payment schedule works? Because they actually have quite a bit of time to pay their bills.
Well, it says it's gonna be shut off if there is an ACH. It's declined. So, I mean, that's something that happens. I mean, you know when it's gonna happen typically, but if you've overlooked it, you get a notice from the bank that it's declined, it would just happen automatically.
Go ahead, Jill.
So this is just within our new changes, um, and it's related only to the ACHs. So if you're if you come in and you set up your service, you get a discount for um signing up for ACH at that time. So if your ACH is declined, um, your services would be disconnected according to this verbiage that we are um proposing.
So I think Amber's suggestion was for that specific um part of the, the ordinance was to give a grace period for those. So it just doesn't happen right away?
Yeah, whatever you think is reasonable. I don't think we would wanna go something like thirty days where you've got, you know, then we're, we're perpetuating potentially a whole other month's worth of water usage and that sort of thing, but you know, something
Like five days?
Something temporary. It's like, oh, I just need to get my check at a bank or, you know, whatever the case may be.
I, I can wait for
Are you sure?
Oh, yeah. What I was gonna say is if I'm paying based on either an E bill or a paper bill, how long do I have to pay it? And normally then there's a due date. Now, if I do not make that payment by that due date, what happens?
But Brandy, handle that one.
Mayor, Counselor, um, but that happens now as it is, that we have paperless statements. I- if you don't pay by your due date, which we have the due dates on the bills set three days before that thirtieth day. So the customer has a few days after the due date on the bill to make sure that they can avoid that twenty dollar fee that we just invoked on the last resolution. And then at that point, we'll cut the delinquent notice and that's what triggers that fee. And then they have fifteen days from that timeframe before they're at risk of being shut off. And if you want me to expand on that, we do a reminder call and
No, you, you hit on the thing that I was asking about, and this alludes to what Amber is talking about, is basically on non-ACH accounts, you have eighteen days roughly before your water's gonna be shut off. That three-day grace period, then the other timeframe. And I would think to go along with what Amber is talking about, that that should be applied then, is that due date is the same date as the ACH date. So then they should have that timeframe to get it squared away before you're cut off. Is that what you were alluding to?
Generally, yeah.
Yeah, that, go ahead, Brandy.
On ACH, um, we pull those payments twenty days after each bill. And so they will have had a bill cut. Twenty days after that bill is cut, we charge the fee. So then we're ten days before that thirtieth day before they'll get any delinquent fees. By the time we know that that bill has not been paid, and this is, this ACH that we're talking about in the ordinance is specific to those customers that have a deposit that we waived half of that deposit for them because they set up ACH. And the intent of this section of it is to deter um customers who might not intend to keep the ACH. We're trying to make sure that there's incentive for them to keep the ACH.
But what you're telling me is, is you've already sent them a bill. Got a leg cramp. Bear with me. So what you're telling me then is basically you send out a bill and then you don't make the withdrawal, the ACH, for twenty days after that. So they already have twenty days in there to come to you and say, hey, I've got financial issues. Can I set up a payment schedule? Can I do anything else? Okay. They've already got a twenty-day grace period then.
Well, go ahead, Amber.
I would just suggest like, I've had a debit card bounced before where it's like, oh, I'm just not paying that close attention to it. And it's like, if my stuff is like, you know, instantly turned off, I'd be like, oh, sorry, I just, I'll refill my account and, and pay it like twenty, if I got my bill twenty days, in twenty days I've looked at the bill, I have put it in a giant stack of paper and I may not be monitoring it like closely enough. I'm just thinking like an immediate shut off and immediate whack with fees. If one ACH payment doesn't go through is, ACH is a sort of out of sight, out of mind. That's part of the nice thing about it. Um, but it has the, you know, potential to be like, hey, you weren't paying close enough attention. And to me, getting your water disconnected for lack of that attention is kind of an extreme instant response. Again, I'm not suggesting even a week, I think, is too long. Three days. Like, you know, a short period of time where it's like, oh, shoot, it's a, it's a simple mistake and A- ACH is not like when you trigger, when you elect to pay a bill, you're thinking about your account, you're checking your account, see if you have the money and you pay it. ACH happens in, when you're asleep in your bed and you may not be, you know, monitoring your account super precisely at that exact moment when the ACH withdraws. So I just think like a slight little bit of like, there was a mistake, my timing was off, let me get it sorted out with you is reasonable.
Brandy.
Couple of things. If you would put on the website that you would like me to go paperless, that's great, because I haven't opened a water bill in three years. I had no idea you did a campaign. But based on, not that I would have ever done that, but had my son, who's never opened his bill, had an ACH, he just got a three hundred and fifty dollar water bill, he wouldn't, it would have bounced. He had no idea that his bill was that much. And not the relevant part of that, his next bill was eleven dollars. So I'm gonna go on a limb and say, maybe, maybe that was us. So just because I'd love to say our readers are never inaccurate, but just based on the fact that he had a three hundred and fifty dollar bill followed by an eleven dollar bill, maybe, just maybe, we should give a little leeway, because he couldn't have paid the three fifty if you had ACHed him. Brandy, he didn't know he could do a half deposit to do ACH, so he just paid the bill. But I do see that there are people who might not have a huge summer water bill in their account.
And they might not open their water bill.
I'm, I'm, I'm not naming names, but so I feel like a grace period would be kind too, because if I bounce something, I'm going to know, because my bank is going to mention that to me very quickly.
This is a good plug for the, for the city of Casper. Hey, you're
So I'm sensing, is there, is there something, Jill, Brandy, could we do for a grace period? Is there something we could put in there? In the language that would allow for a three to five day grace period for that?
Of course, if it's the bill of council, we can um draft some language for you and see if that would work.
Carter.
Uh, the question that I had about this particular concept is whether or not uh, say I had to get a new debit card because I had some broad and fraudulent charge and they said, we're gonna shut your card down or you can do it, blah, blah, blah. I didn't change my account with you guys. Do I get a notice that like Netflix, when I, when I'm, you know, Netflix is like, man, we can't make a payment? Here's your email, change the card so we can charge you for your access to, you know, Band of Brothers. That's something we can do? Do we have that algorithm available to them?
Uh, so just to do some clarification. What you're talking about when you talk about debit card and automatic payment, that's not tied to the deposits and the, the half waiver. The half waiver is done within my team at the um city hall level. It's not done through the online portal. And so to answer your question, our online portal does notify you if your card is uh declined or if uh, something happens with that payment process, or it should be. I need to know if you don't get that notification, so I can fix the problem. Uh, but it does notify you. Uh, as for the ACH, we send out letters to the customers if it comes back unpaid and take that payment off of their account and uh notify them. And so we would be able to do some sort of grace period. There's kinda already that built into the process, because our meter services guys are running the tails off out there. And so it's likely not gonna happen same day anyway. Um, but we could work some of it out to help maintain that. I would like to see that it's not something that we inherit and let them continue to do. So if they're chronically bouncing their ACH payments and they're on a half deposit waiver, that there would be something that we would
Some language you could put in there. That's fair.
Yeah, I think that's fair.
Yeah. Steve.
If I understand it right, though, there's a difference between what Carter was talking about and a true ACH.
Yeah.
Because an ACH is tied directly to your bank account, not to your debit card. So your debit card, credit card, whatever, doesn't matter. You could cancel all of them and that ACH would still go through. I always wanted to make sure of that distinction that, yeah, that ACH is tied directly to the bank account.
Um, the only other suggestion that I got, um, but kinda moved forward with was about um paperless and, and paper. Sounded like I, I'd heard the council um say that they were somewhat supportive of an incentive program rather than a um charge uh to people. Um, Carter, did you wanna uh chime in on that one?
Mr. Mayor, uh, depending on where council wants to go with this, the only concern that I have about actually creating an incentive is I'm having a hard time not viewing that as an expense that we all of a sudden take on uh in order to encourage people to, you know, go paperless. And so I'm wondering if council would have a tolerance for an opt-in provision past a certain deadline where everything goes paperless. And so in other words, if um, you know, I'm one of those folks that just has to live and die by getting that in the mail, I'm gonna be notified that as of January one, um, I'm not gonna get that mail anymore. I gotta do something in order to opt in so that when January one rolls around, I still get my parcel in the mail for that hard copy bill that I look at, you know? Um, and, and, and I don't know what would make me eligible to be able to opt in. Maybe I am a senior citizen that doesn't have the World Wide Web available to me and, and those kinds of things. I don't know, you know, that's, that's what I would like. We could have some parameters that we could work against.
Anybody who calls it the World Wide Web is eligible.
So Carter, let me get this straight. I'm trying to understand. That's a good point too. Um, you're saying that there's an opt-in op- uh opportunity for those that would stay paperless? Or is there, or?
That would want to be getting stuff in the mail.
Still, but that we were gonna go paperless in a, a certain amount of time?
Uh, uh, on a drop dead date, that's right.
But people could opt into, into it or pay state, state paper.
Right.
Is that what you're saying?
So if I, if I am eligible to opt in based on parameters that you help us set.
Okay.
Uh, so that we can have a fairly objective uh guideline to work from. Um, I know that by January one, I gotta apply
Gotcha, okay.
To make sure that I can continue that paper service and not necessarily incur a fee to do it either.
Sure. Is council o- open to that? Yeah, Brandy?
What if the fact that you're actually willing to take the time to opt in is good enough? Then you're not incentivizing me to not throw away that bill, but you're not breaking Steve's heart either. But if you actually go through the work to say, hey, man, I really want a paper bill, I don't have a paper bill. I'm never doing that either. Now you want me to like write something a lot or check a box? So I feel like if you're actually like, hey, man, Brandy, I really need this bill to come in the mail. So I feel like if you're actually like, hey, man, Brandy, I really need this bill to come in the mail because the newspaper's expensive. Maybe we let you have it because you took that effort. I did want my ten cents though.
Amber.
I, I think it's a reasonable first step towards going paperless. And then if we find that there is a need later, like if the buy-in is not what we hope it would be, then we can explore of phase two of a push towards paperless, but I think there's a reasonable phase one.
Well, and I'm assuming that if they didn't opt in to get the paper and then we went wire or whatever, paperless, then they could call you and ask to get that, then that would be doable, right? That, yeah, so they could call you and say, hey, is there a way I can get that? So, I mean, I think that Carter's suggestion is a really good one.
Agreed. Steve.
No. As part of their carrot instead of the stick, how much does it cost to send out one bill right now? Roughly?
When I was looking at setting the fee, I was gonna try to absorb, just give enough for the cost, so it's just under two dollars. All of it deep. And.
So basically, if you were to give a dollar off of a bill as your carrot, you've cut your expenses in half for those that are willing to opt into it. You've given them a carrot and you're still getting the extra buck revenue. So, so the city is net ahead.
Unless they don't pay their bill.
I would pay you.
They aren't gonna pay it for it anyhow.
Do what?
I said, I would pay you a dollar to not send me the bill.
I was gonna do it for ten cents.
Yes.
So, so it sounds like Carter, we're open to that compromise. Now, you said parameters, as far as the parameters, are you saying, you, you talked about parameters, are you saying that we're looking at, trying to find, so we're looking at this demographic that would do that or what are you saying for parameters?
Well, Mr. Mayor, I appreciate the question. Basically what I mean is, um, so that, you know, Jill's team has some objective standards that qualifies a person to evaluate those opt-in requests against. It's a lot easier than just having it wide open and leave, and making it more subjective than objective.
Gotcha, yeah.
Is what I'm shooting for.
Okay. Sounds good. Okay. Any other suggestions for this? That keep you some level?
Uh, the, the only other thing that I heard kind of float around the table a little bit was with regard to some reticence as it relates to turn off fees or turn on fees, depending on
Oh, yeah.
what part of the equation you want to address. Um, and, and so I wasn't sure that I heard some acquiescence around principle or not. And so I just want to make sure I, we didn't miss anything.
Anybody have anything specific they wanted about turn on fees, turn off fees, anything like that?
Yeah, okay.
I don't have anything specific that I'd like to add, and I don't want to put counselor, word in Counselor Pollak's mouth. I think she was just kind of giving an idea of like philosophically what we should be aiming for and that. Um, I, uh, resonated with that because when we were having that discussion at that time, I had brought up the concerns about, I mean, especially with increasing rent these days. Uh, homelessness is a topic that we're talking, you know, we're spending a tremendous amount of resources and time talking about. And if we're creating an environment where somebody has to have two thousand dollars out of pocket just to afford first month's rent, it's not gonna make that transition from homeless to home, uh, any easier. And so I guess, I don't have any specific recommendations, but I do want to, you know, I'm cool with the opt-in. Um, I think that's another good compromise. Um, I would just like us in the future to aim towards those sorts of solutions and not just, you know, just tagging on a fee because it's kind of the way things have always been done or whatever. Uh, because, yeah, we, I mean, times are tough these days, man. Um, and I don't think we should make it a barrier any higher for folks to get into a place to rent or to get into their first home. I think we should try to make that as easy as possible if, uh, we had to go.
Thank you. Yeah, Steve.
If I understood it right, when you're just getting into one, either new home or new rental, there is no turn on fee.
Correct.
There is a two hundred dollar deposit, I believe.
Well, deposits are deposits and they're there for a reason, to try to eliminate part of our two hundred and fifty thousand dollar write-off.
I understand. I think we increased it to a hundred and twenty-five dollars. Um, so again, it's just, um, I understand the need from the city's perspective, but when we try to put ourselves in the shoes of the people that are struggling to pay their bills, everyone, um, we need to be mindful of that.
Yeah, agreed.
Is there a payment plan for deposits? Sorry.
Oh, no, no, you're good.
Counselor, no, there is not.
That's the only thing that I would suggest is because two hundred dollars is a lot.
It's only half if you do ACH.
And it's, and if, and, and I'm not saying everybody would need it, but maybe an option to make it in two payments or something of that nature, something to kind of, two hundred dollars is a lot.
Fair.
No, go ahead, Jill. That'll get started. No, no, you're good.
So we typically don't do it for a deposit because we do not turn your water on until we collect the deposit. So there would be no way to really do two payments unless they were gonna wait until after that second payment in order to get their water turned off.
I guess I'm, I'm, because the gas bills and the power bills, they will charge a deposit that they put it on your bill. And then people are allowed to just make payments towards that deposit. So they can still get their utilities and still move in and then continue to make those payments towards the deposits. And so I guess I was thinking the city could match something of what the other utilities are doing.
Brandy.
She's shaking her head.
Counselor, we actually were not collecting deposits upfront, uh, when I first took over this position. And, uh, we had a large sum of those that were not paid and then the next bill wasn't paid and the next bill wasn't paid. And we were having trouble shutting people off, so then the next bill wasn't paid and, and so it compounded. And we've had more success collecting them upfront because it's an incentive for them to pay it and then just get on board with that. So that's my history on that particular.
Carter, did you have anything about deposit?
Uh, I, I don't think so.
Okay, thank you. I guess, at this point, I guess it sounds like we'll stay with it. Is it pretty, would it be complicated to have to do a payment process or you don't think it would work, Brandy?
Thank you, Mayor. Counselors, I, I don't think it would be complicated. I think that, um, it would just depend on what the parameters are that we want to say, like a hundred dollars is due upfront or fifty if you're getting, um, the discount with ACH or however we wanted to do that.
Yeah.
Um, you know, I'm, I'm trying to be simultaneously mindful that like we don't want to, um, work against the stated goal here, which is to, um, try to end up with less sum of money written off at the end. And obviously deposits are a helpful tool in that. Um, I think from where I was coming from, it's, uh, for, for me, I think that's supposed to be particularly mindful around those, you know, when people have gotten behind, how hard do we make it for them to get caught up and regain service? And so, you know, there were a couple of fees that, that, that I voted to approve that I may have scrutinized upon further reflection a little bit more, um, in the last conversation. So I, I think it, for me, it's the turn on, the shut off, the turn on fees, like that particular interaction with, with folks that I think we should be particularly mindful of and, you know, where like, how, how hard do we make it for people to dig out of a hole who are trying to dig out of a hole? So that's just philosophical. I don't have specific, specific direction around it, just as we consider, you know, the specific ordinance change and, you know, future conversations around it. That's my position.
Uh, why don't we do this with the deposit? Let's, let's keep it where it's at. And then if we look at and we're seeing significant issues and problems with this, can you guys come back to report to us? Say that we're seeing people struggling to, to reach this and we're having a hard time, you know, trying to collect the two hundred dollars for deposits or we're seeing that. And I, I think we can have that conversation, um, if we're seeing it, if that's a possibility, if council's amenable to that. And I do agree with the, that we should make this as easy as possible for people especially. So, agreed. Thank you. Anything else? Carter, anything we're missing?
I, I think that covers it as near as I can tell. Yeah, thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you, guys. We appreciate you being here. That was an easy one.
Yeah, piece of cake.
It was a piece of cake.
Where's, where's my easy, bud?
Yeah, Kyle's like.
Do it.
Thank you, Brandy. Thanks, Joe. We appreciate your expertise. Oh, yeah. Okay, moving on to Ward One, uh, vacancy process to, uh, fill the empty seat. Um, looks like you have some dates for us, Carter, and some questions, and we'll be there yourself.
Yeah, yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I appreciate Amanda's work on putting all that together. Um, the basic question is with regard to what you'd like to see in terms of filling the, the vacant seat, uh, from Ward One. And so we've got a proposed timeline that Amanda put together that you should have in front of you. Um, and, and, and it really, in my estimation, boils down to how much application time you'd like to make available for potential candidates. And then of course, what you'd like your interview process to look like, which has had a variety of forms over the years. So that kind of direction would be really helpful for us. Uh, as I mentioned, Amanda put a lot of this together and, um, she can help with some questions or fill in any of your blanks with other details as you see fit.
Yeah, we'll put up to the dais to see if there's any questions, thoughts. Steve.
First of all, I noticed that on the pre-meeting on the seventeenth, which would be a regular council meeting, is we were gonna have candidate interviews. If you have ten candidates, that isn't gonna fit into a pre-meeting unless we start it at two o'clock in the afternoon. So I think that we may want to have a special meeting for candidate interviews to where all we do is do candidate interviews and then make the selection.
Amanda.
So we kind of went back and worked with this. Um, I think when the last time that we did interviews, we did do it during the meeting. We just started it at like four o'clock.
Yeah, so I was gonna say.
Um, so we give ten minutes usually to each candidate, so that'd be about twelve candidates before six o'clock, if we were to do it. That is the option.
Would council, if we did do it at a pre-meeting for that, um, if we start it like at four o'clock on the seventeenth, be able to plan on doing that? Do you says no? Anybody else? Is everybody okay? Yeah. Mike, you okay with that?
You, you've got chamber of commerce meeting at four o'clock.
Is that what it falls on the seventeenth, the third? Thank you, my personal assistant.
Do what?
I said, thank you, my personal assistant. I do.
And actually, that's the second day of elk season, so I'm iffy to begin with. And so, but I was just bringing that up is that we're gonna have to do something different than our normal. But so, so do I have the rest of your calendar? I've got my wife's on here.
I do like paper.
So.
Twenty-four.
So that, so then that would make, that would put, put us at having a special meeting either on the sixteenth or the eighteenth then, is what I would see of having to do that if that's the case.
Talked about doing it during the October tenth work session, but we're, we are pretty full on that.
Yeah.
Work session, and I think there are items that we don't, we won't.
Yeah, there's some big stuff on the tenth. Um, I guess i- if Jenna can't be here and Steve's a possible, um, MIA for it, um, I guess a special meeting either on the eighteenth, sixteenth or the eighteenth.
I can move my schedule.
I would go for the twelfth.
You're saying for the seventeenth, is that what you're saying? You could, okay. So Steve, I'm sorry, now it's looking like everybody could do the seventeenth pre-meeting.
That's fine.
Okay.
You're okay, wait.
No, I've got people coming in from out of town. My son has finally agreed to go with me. I mean, jeez.
So it looks like the timeline and I'll, I'll make sure that the council's online. Looks like the timeline is, we're looking at applications. Um, tomorrow, sent out, um, they'll be back on the twelfth and then the pre-meeting like we just talked about. And then we'll, um, go into an executive session and appoint af- after the meeting. Is that what, we, we, we would do that? Okay.
Are we gonna get, we, will we be able to get copies of the applications on the evening of the twelfth?
Yeah, so Mayor Council, we, um, set the deadline for Thursday so that we'll have that Friday of the packet to get everything out.
Oh, perfect.
And we will post them online as long as the, um, applicants initial a box statement they're okay with.
Okay.
The reason I was asking about, excuse me, the reason I was asking about the twelfth is by about nine o'clock on the morning of the thirteenth, I won't have email.
Um.
That's why I was asking, trying to be able to look at it.
That line on Wednesday instead of Thursday.
Are you here in town on the twelfth?
Yes.
I would just say get it on the twelfth. Just Steve. Everybody, I mean, obviously, but I think if Steve can get it by the twelfth, then he can.
So Mayor Council, usually we get the applications before that deadline.
Yeah, agreed.
So there might just be one or two that come in that afternoon.
I was interested in trying to be able to look them over and at least throw out an opinion.
Oh, okay.
Which I would send to Carter that then he could distribute to council, so it's not us.
Right.
We're not, that's not a published public meeting. Does that, does that work, Mr. Attorney?
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, so does anybody have any objections with the plan as it is put on? Okay.
Yeah, I don't have an objection with the plan. I don't see it on a further agenda. So I was curious, the, the interviews, I'm trying to remember the last time we did this, didn't we have a static set of questions that we asked them? So that there was no subjectivity? Yeah.
Yep, so that there's in the packet, there's the proposed questions. Oh my gosh. And so there's five of them that everybody will be asked. Amber.
Actually, I believe last time we did it, they just addressed us. We didn't ask any questions at all. And they had to address all of those questions in their speech to us.
That was perfect. Yep, you're right.
So is that what we're doing again or are we asking the questions real time?
Mr. Mayor, uh, Counselor, I think we are suggesting the exact same format. Um, e- e- essentially they will present remarks based on the questions that you have in front of you. And those remarks will be their pitch to you as to why they may, may, may not be a viable candidate.
I prefer that format.
Is council good with that format still? Okay.
I, I would also say, Mr. Mayor, uh, I do not recall council asking follow-up questions as part of that.
We, we've kind of put a hint against it. We said, no, we, we don't want to do any follow-up because that put anybody, um, an advantage, you know?
No.
Oh, go ahead, Steve.
I know last time we allowed an online or a remote interview.
Yes.
Are we gonna do that again?
I, I think it's, we should, right, or no?
Upon request.
Upon request.
Well, the reason I'm asking is because one of the candidates got a little PO'd because he'd showed up in person and then we allowed.
And we, can we put that in there, saying if, if you need to? So just so it was a boy, given to everybody or?
She did request it. She says she was out of town for the day of the interview. Um, so I would think just upon request maybe. Um, the other thing, I just want to make sure that you guys are all okay with the questions because they have been tweaked and passed.
I've read them and I, I really like them. I think they've worked well.
They're good.
Yep.
Think it's good.
Yep.
Are we gonna require this person to run again?
I don't think we can.
Yeah, I don't think we can. I think that it's voluntary.
Yeah, wasn't that a question?
It was. If you, if you get this, you think you'll run again? Um, but I'd.
Just because the last time we asked the people who were not running, because it was right before.
Oh, it was right before that. Yeah.
It was right, it was right in here.
So we.
And we didn't want them to have that very bad pre-teen.
Yeah, that's right.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. Basically, we were filling a three-month position.
That's right.
Till the end of the year because the election was coming up. But I know when, gosh.
Time before.
Yeah, the time before. Yeah, we asked everybody if they were gonna run.
Yeah, it was similarly close to, I, I feel like it was similarly about the same timeframe. So it's like, okay, you're gonna be here for like a year. Do you have interest in pursuing election beyond that?
So do you, would you like to?
Yeah, let's put that in there. Please, is okay with having that question?
Does it affect your decision, you think?
I think it's a terrible question.
Yeah.
If I, if you had asked me, it'd have been like, heck, yeah, you asked me today.
I think that it would lend to, like, if they're just wanting to just dabble in. I think that it would lend to, like, if they're just wanting to just dabble in it, or if they're serious and they wanna continue within the public service.
You're saying that you would wanna see that from them? So let's, thumbs up if you, if you would like to see that question in here, I'm just gonna.
Could, could people talk a little bit more about why they care about seeing it or don't care about seeing it?
Yeah.
I'm trying to form it, I'm trying to make a decision, and I can't decide if it's important.
You bet. More conversation?
Yeah.
Well, I've, I'm kind of in the middle on it. I, I could have it, or I could take it or leave it, frankly.
I guess to a point, if you believe what Bruce said, that he wasn't going to run again, then filling this position, it really doesn't matter. 'Cause you're gonna be having a new candidate anyhow in a year and a half. So whether this particular candidate would run or not, really doesn't matter.
I'll offer two cents for why I don't think it's a necessary question. Uh, I don't even know if I'm gonna run again, and I've been on council for two and a half years, and I've had quite a lot of time to consider and reflect upon it, so. I would judge somebody who has no idea what they're walking into to make the decision now whether they're gonna run again. I don't, I haven't even made that decision, so I guess that's why I don't think it's a necessary question.
Jenna?
I was just trying to figure out what value in that question would it have? I mean, what, whether they answer yes or no, how, how would that sway our opinion? You know what I mean? Like, where's the value in that question?
I, I'm trying to remember, when we were talking about with Jaiela, there were some that said that they would not want to run again, and so we kinda didn't consider them. Was it a smaller timeframe?
I thought I remembered it being about the same.
The, uh, Mr. Mayor, during the time that, uh, Councilwoman Quest was appointed, um, there was a similar timeframe to what you're facing right now, in terms of when they'd have to run again, if they chose to run. But the time, the immediate time that leads us to now, we, we were dealing with two seats.
Right.
That rode.
Yeah, we didn't ask about that.
Yeah, and that was just a three-month window, but the previous time, yes, it was more similar to this.
'Cause we're still hoping she's gonna run again.
Amber?
Yeah, I think that the, I, I, I think I recall like the rationale, it's like, it's a good opportunity to get somebody in and up to speed, to create further continuity. You know, and it's like, oh, we're gonna have five seats up, you know, that can see a lot of new faces and to create continuity. Um, but, you know, for reference, like, she didn't win the election. So, I mean, so even if you do run, that doesn't guarantee the continuity anyway, and so I'm not sure that it really helps us make the decision all that much. I, I think we should leave it out.
Is everybody okay with that, then? Okay, good discussion. So I think everything else, otherwise, Mike, I didn't want, oh, Mike, your hand was up. I didn't wanna leave you. I keep forgetting about you.
Thank, thank you, Mayor. Um, I, I did have a, I'm, I'm not in favor of having that question, by the way, but, uh, and I I do have a question about, uh, question number four, or thought. I'm wondering if we even need the first part of that question, 'cause it's really a simple yes or no. Have you been following the council activity lately? It's a yes or no. If they say no, is that kind of the end of the discussion? Um, I, I just, I think it's okay. I think, honestly, the question is okay just with the second part. I don't think, I think the first part is kind of extraneous, but I could be convinced otherwise.
So my interpretation of that, Mike, is how have you been following council activity lately? So to me, it's a question, the first part of that question, you guys can agree or disagree, is, is looking at, hey, well, I jump on sometimes online, or I'm reading about you in the newspaper, or I've been coming to your council meetings, and so it's just a good idea, then some people will say, well, I really don't follow it at all. Um, and so it kind of just gives us a good gauge, uh, kind of gives us a good gauge of that. That's how I read the, read that, that question. Amber?
Yeah.
Yeah.
You bet.
In interviews past, I'm not sure that we got particularly helpful information from candidates. It's like, oh, well, I went back and watched the last meeting, or, you know, whatever. I do think that the, the substance there is like, what are the issues that we think are facing? We can get a good sense of if they've been following or not, based on if they pull something that has been topical for us or, or not. I don't have a strong opinion one way or the other, but I will say it, it felt a little, um, a little more like, uh, before you apply, you should go do some homework, sort of, um, like, the question wasn't so much a question as it was like a call to action to go look some stuff up. Um, and so, what, yeah, have you said, so whether that was helpful to us or not, I, I don't know, but to me, it feels less like a question. I'm more like a, you could go check this out before you come interview.
Yeah.
Which is fine, if that's helpful to us, but.
We okay with that, then, Stamen? Any other discussion related to that? Amanda, Carter, looks like you're, looks like we're good to go on everything.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you, Amanda, for putting that all together. We appreciate it.
The deadline was okay, the October twelfth.
Deadline's good for the twelfth, or do, are good for that? All right. Thank you. All right, Agenda Review.
Mr. Mayor, in, in the interest of time, um, you all kind of know this field as it relates to the grid. If you see anything in there that you have questions about, or maybe missing from the back page, that's the purpose of this particular point, you can, if you had that kind of direction.
Anything you guys see? Any conversation? Thanks, Carter.
Thank you.
Uh, anything on the legislative review?
No, sir.
Okay. Okay, round the table.
Yep, I not prepared for that yet either, so I can't remember what I did yesterday. So right now, um, attended the visit cast for board meeting and gave our input on a couple community things that are happening around here, and then, um, there is also like Old Yellowstone District, one of the boards that stood on with Kyle. We're having a meeting. It's got rescheduled, because Liz had some pending or some business to get taken care of. So we are gonna reschedule that, and then we'll get into it, so I don't have anything, 'cause I didn't have any boards.
You'll humor me. I have a couple, uh, things. And I've written them out for the sake of brevity, so I'm not word salivating. Uh, I wanna thank you, Mayor Pacheco, for your statement at the beginning of the meeting. Uh, I also wanna thank the city manager, attorney, and the chief, uh, who's not here with us today um, for holding the press conference last week, as well as all the other work you guys had to do uh, regarding the news around the former mayor. I'm sure it wasn't an easy week for anyone in the organization, and uh, your work is certainly appreciated. I just wanted to make sure, um, it was a long week, so I appreciate you all very much. You're very responsive, and you were juggling all your other duties on top of doing that stuff. Uh, if you don't mind, Mayor, I'd like to expand a little bit on your statements just a bit, because I know there was a lot of people who were hoping and looking for more communication from us last week. Has this all transpired? That's totally understandable. Uh, I saw lots of commentary from folks who were wishing for us as council members to come out and condemn Mr. Nell for the allegations, as they are very serious. Uh, however, I believe Counselor Kathy kind of alluded to this, uh, last week. Uh, I wonder if those people that are going to be, uh, I wonder if those people are going to be as quick to apologize should he end up innocent as they were quick to convict him before he's even be, uh, even been charged with a crime. I certainly wanna do my part to hold people guilty, uh, of heinous acts responsible, but I also don't wanna play any part in destroying the livelihood of a man who may end up innocent. I don't know Bruce's outside of this forum, and I don't know his wife at all, so as far as I'm concerned, Mr. Nell has a right to his day in court, and I personally am going to reserve judgment until all the details of the allegations are brought to light. And, uh, I would encourage others to do the same. I think it's a responsible thing to do. That said, innocence and guilt aside, the allegations against the former mayor are in a long line of recent controversies and of a pattern of behavior exhibited by Mr. Nell that illustrated he was unfit for the office he held. An office most of us elected him to, and I imagine a vote many of us are now regretting. Uh, that's why I reached out to him several times, through phone and email last week, pleading with him to resign, and going so far as to write a press release form to use, which, uh, mine was much better, I might say so myself. I don't know if his did himself any favors. Uh, resignation was the only option, because as evidenced by the situation we found ourselves in last week, and as stated by the mayor earlier, council has limited tools to remove a mayor from leadership. The only tools we did have available to us were taking majority vote of council to initiate an administrative hearing with the assistance of outside council, or getting a petition signed by twenty-five percent of the registered voters to hold a special election, both of which would have likely taken several months, uh, which is the extent of his tenure. I'm glad that former Mayor Nell eventually made the right decision, which was to resign, but had he not, we would have been in a pretty terrible position as a council, effectively held hostage until the end of the year by a leader that neither us nor the community had any faith could effectively carry out the duties that the title brings. And so this is why, to prevent future councils from having to grapple with the same situation, I would ask to have a future work session item to discuss options, and the potential for expanding upon the current processes to give this body more ability to remove someone from the role of mayor or vice mayor when they have proven themselves to have lost the confidence of our group and/or they are otherwise unfit for the position of leadership. It is, and it should be, an enormous hurdle to override the will of the people and remove someone from council entirely, but it should be less of a hurdle for us to change or alter our leadership as is decided entirely by us, and so I would ask for that to be added to a future work session.
Counsel, okay with that?
Thank you very much. One other one. Um, additionally, I don't know about anyone else, but I found the mayoral, vice mayoral election process last week very clunky and awkward. Um, which is surprising to me, 'cause I thought we talked about it pretty recently, uh, and thought we got to a good place, so I don't I haven't had the chance to reflect and see if we were abiding by, uh, you know, what we had decided the last time. So it could have been in part due to the circumstances, which required expedient planning and resolution. Uh, but in general, I think there's an opportunity to further refine this process. In my opinion, running for mayor or vice mayor should be very similar to appointing someone to council, which we just discussed. I don't think there should be an interview necessarily, but I do think candidates and those seeking office should seek, should give a brief explanation in regards to why they wanna serve as mayor or vice mayor, why they believe themselves the best suited amongst the other candidates, what their goals and priorities will be, and whether they can make the commitments required. Again, similar to what we're asking of, uh, an appointed position. Uh, with all due respect to my colleague, Vice Mayor Anga Brexton, I don't think I agree with the notion that we needed a female in leadership just for the sake of it, and I really would have liked the opportunity to hear her answers to some of those questions, as well as provide some myself. I think this would have resulted in a much more informed vote, which is something we should obviously strive for, given recent events. We need to very much vet the candidates in our leadership positions as much as possible. Um, I also think that we should consider things like a ballot nomination process, as opposed to taking those nominations from the dais. Uh, dais, dais, somebody correct me on that if I'm pronouncing it wrong. Um, that felt very awkward, uh, as well, and so, uh, I think we should consider some sort of ballot nomination process where you can submit those, uh, silently, and so I guess for those reasons, I would ask also, uh, to add to a future work session, uh, refining and clarifying the electoral process. I would encourage us to do that before the next election. I think, uh, that would be the ideal, uh, time to do it, but I would also ask for my colleagues to support in that, too. So I'm asking for a few things tonight, I apologize.
Carter, are we looking at the, the straw poll or the straw ballot come out in November? Is that what we normally do?
Then typically, uh, Mr. Mayor, would be the timeframe that we would go, where soliciting.
Would there be a work session before I presented to the council? Would it, would there be a work session for us to fit it in to talk about it before, um, that November selection?
You know, typically what we do, Your Honor, is, uh, we do sit down with the council, just, just like we did tonight, and say, hey, here's what we're thinking about process, uh, to appoint leadership. Give us your feedback and so on. I, I will tell you that, um, I, I would want to do that pursuant to the minutes of the, uh, sort of debrief that we went through during the, the last go-around, maybe a year ago. And, and, uh, you know, offer our proposals against the backdrop that those minutes provide, whatever that might be, 'cause I, I, I don't recall. As I said, but, um.
Would that work out? I mean, are you looking more for just like a deconstruction of the whole thing and looking at it?
Yeah, uh, again, I haven't, I haven't taken the opportunity, or probably had the opportunity, to go look back at that session that we had, yeah, that was about a year ago. Um, it does not feel like we were following that process, and again, it could have been, uh, last week was a, a doozy. Uh, so it could have been straight from what we had decided, but it just felt very clunky and uh, awkward to me, and I feel like that can be a better refined process that, again, allows us the opportunity to kind of vet candidates a little bit, not just kind of a spur of the moment, well, I think you should do it, kinda um, lackadaisical kind of thing. I just think we can do it in a lot more structured way. And as far as, uh, uh, sorry.
No, go ahead. Yeah, would you wanna finish it, and then we'll get?
Sure, uh, the November straw poll, if you please remind me, 'cause it's been a while, so I, I do remember having a straw poll at the end of a year, but then, uh, when we come back at the beginning of next year, do we not reaffirm that straw poll through another election?
In January, we do the final vote.
Okay.
An official vote that is binding.
We do one straw poll.
One straw poll, and then the actual vote in January.
And, and, Mr. Mayor, just to, to even further clarify, we, we typically do take nominations in the week leading up to that straw poll, so it's not right there on the floor. You know, uh, sort of spontaneously taking nominations, so generally speaking, that is a main feature of, of the typical process.
Right. And? Go ahead.
Yeah, I would, I would just say, like, um, I, I agree, I too was confused by the nomination process itself, because it was a departure from the ballot nomination that we have used every other time that I've been a part of a lifetime leadership, so so tha- that caught me off guard, um, as well, and I got the sense that it caught some of the folks off guard. Um, and I do believe, I, I, I would like to, um, support Carter's approach that we revisit those minutes, because I think a lot of what Kyle just expressed was actually expressed there as well, um, and, you know, particularly as it relates to people having an opportunity to say a little bit about why they wanna be in leadership, about what they're looking to do, and, and that sort of thing, which I think we um, agreed would be helpful, um, after the last appointment, and, um, I think are reaffirming now would be helpful based on, um, you know, having gone through it again, and so, um, so, yeah, it, it's I, I would support Kyle's, um, request that, that we go over that, and I don't think it necessarily needs to be its own work session, since I think it really is predominantly a reaffirmation of where we landed after the last debrief, that we just need to be refreshed on more than anything.
Brandy?
I'm, the straw poll part clearly was before my time, but it has been much more recently that we beat this voting to it, like, I believe I referred to it as a dead horse. I was so done, but after we did this, I was like, clearly we're not done, because it wa- it was messy. And I didn't love it, so I do think that now that we've tried it the new way, or we all forgot what the new way is, we clearly need a refresher of ours. But we did, I did get it, pick your nominations before I had even started in office, so there was an email you can nominate, and then there was a window of, thank you for nominating me, hard pass. So I do feel like that is something, I don't know how we could have done that in twenty-four hours, but maybe we should have tried. So I agree that this is probably something, apparently we need a quickie version and a in-ideal situations versions for how we vote for someone.
Yeah, I would say that what hap- it was, it's a case of that it was such a quick turnaround, that there were things that happened, and, yeah.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I, I, I can appreciate the angst that that created. Uh, I, I know from staff perspective, we were very much in need of at least an interim mayor and vice mayor, and so uh, that, that was kind of the, the framework that I was hoping we could have couched this employment process within, because without a doubt, I, I I hope we never have to do that again, and, and I think hopefully this was a one-off, you know? Uh, but, uh, but I very much looked at this as an interim process, an interim appointment, and, uh, we take on the full and regular appointment process with all the, the stocks and, and and, uh, needs that that process requires in November at the very least.
So can we put that as a conversation of a of a refresh, just gonna give us ready, prepared?
Your question.
You're done, okay.
You wanna talk about Metro? You want me to?
Yeah.
Along those lines, the one thing you mentioned about, you know, the straw poll, and then in January, basically, the straw poll is done in a work session, and so you have to do the voting for the mayor in a public meeting, not a work session, and that has always been basically an affirmation of the straw poll. Is it nominations, and you nominate the one person that was elected in the straw poll, everybody says yay, and off you go, is that?
That's, yeah, that's fair.
So that's what normally happens in January.
And I forgot, we let, elected but not seated people participate in that, so that.
Yeah.
It's a good.
Steve, any updates?
Oh. My CPU meeting at seven AM in the morning is canceled due to lack of business. So I get to sleep until seven o'clock. Beyond that, um, yeah, I have a CNFR meeting Monday night. So I was the alternate there and I had visited with the mayor and I will continue on then as the rep for the CNFR.
Brandy.
I don't have any professional business, and I sat and thought a long and hard about whether or not I wanted to make a statement. And I have a lot of opinions. Anyone who knows me personally knows I have a lot of opinions. But that is not why I joined council. I joined council to help with business, not with my opinions on anyone on here. In fact, I don't know many of you personally, and I think that works really well for my job here. So I'm not going to express my opinions, and if the press ever asks me, I'm not gonna give my opinions to them, because I'm here to do a job. And my personal opinions don't matter for the job that you picked me to do. Your opinions matter, but mine don't. I'm a representative, so I keep my opinions to myself. I pay high dollars for Botox, so my face does the same. And I intend to keep it that way, although I have considered sending that bill out, let me tell you. The only thing I really wanted to address that I myself have seen on Facebook posts. I fully understand why citizens would think that you should be the person voting for mayor. But for that to work, we would have to have someone running for mayor, not running for council. Because once we are elected on council, you can't vote for us for mayor. I love the idea, but we had four people nominated for mayor when I came in. And actually, I think we might have had six nominated, and only three were willing to go on the ballot. You can't pick Amber if Amber doesn't wanna be mayor. So unless we're going to completely revamp how it works and Bruce and Lisa and Kyle. Had run to be mayor and then they didn't win and they're not on here, and at least two of those wouldn't have worked out well for you. So we don't do it that way, and the reason is the mayor represents us. A whole lot more than he represents you. The city staff represents you, Carter represents you. We represent you, but the mayor represents us. So we know we made choices and we are going to try to make changes maybe. And I think that that is good, but it's not that we don't think you guys can pick mayor. It's that unless we change everything, you can't pick mayor. If you vote for me for mayor, I'm not doing it. I'm busy that day. I don't, I am never getting up at six AM. Unless the mayor tells me I have to. So, again, I appreciate all the comments. I do read them, but you're not going to see them. So I'm here to support you and represent you, and you're never going to hear me say personally. And then say something, because you don't care what I have to say after that. And it's fine, I don't ask you to. And I don't know how to end this, because I decided not to say anything, so.
Uh, I'm gonna go with Michael's say, skip you there and I'll get back to Amber. Michael, do you have anything?
Uh, thanks, Ray. Uh, no, I just wanna say, uh, first of all, I wanna say thank you to you, Ray, and to Lisa. For stepping up and, and taking the leadership. I appreciate that so much, and I think you're both the right, right people for the job. I also wanna echo the, the thanks to Carter and the staff, uh, the chief and, and Eric. Uh, for, for the leadership you showed at that press conference and so forth. I, only other thing, I attended the, uh, Thankful Thursday event for the Senior Center last week. They had a successful Thankful Thursday, uh, event. And, um, other than that, I'm looking forward to the work session to hear more about this worldwide web thing. I'm intrigued, so.
So wait for the future, Mike.
I wanna hear all about it.
Amber.
Thank you very much. Um, I will cover Metro since, um, Kyle took a pass on that one. But, um, I did have to leave the meeting a couple minutes early, so you may have to, you may have to round it out for me. But, um, uh, I'm, I would actually like to request if possible, um. I don't know if it's in a packet or not, but the Metro report that we got to review, the quarterly report. I would love if that could get sent to all of the other counselors, so they found it to be really helpful. In addition, um, I wouldn't mind if everybody got to see the, um, the memo that PD put together. Um, that reviewed a variety of different, um, models that, um, animal service providers. Across the state and a little bit in the region, um, use to, to run their facilities. Um, that's sort of the next business of this task force. And I, um, I think it'd be helpful to me and to Kyle if other counselors, that'll be a, a big decision. That's a, that's a, you know, potentially a, a very large change in how we do business relative to the, the change that we've brought to you thus far. Which is related to fees and TNR, and so this is, you know, uh, much more fundamental, and so it'd be helpful to us if. Um, you know, took a little minute to review. I thought the memo was super helpful and thorough and was the result of, um, members of PD. Calling a number of facilities to get a sense of how they're, um, how they're structured. And so it's really into a few different kind of buckets of structure. You've got the nonprofit partner model. You've got a model similar to ours, and then you've got like a joint powers board model with multiple entities participating within that. And so, um, at this point, at least part of the meeting that I was at, it was kind of just predominantly informational. To try to understand what the different models are, the pros and cons of each, and, and I thought PD laid them out really well. And so, um, getting a good sense of where this council is on that question will be helpful, I think, to Kyle and I. So we can represent, um, all of us in, in our discussions with our partner agencies in that group. So, so big conversation, um, if we were to make that type of change, that would, that would represent a relatively large shift for the organization. So, um, would love to have some, some further discussion with the council a little larger on that, um, concept. As we continue to work it out with our partner agencies as well. And we were going to have a presentation from, um, TNR, but that was moved to another meeting. So other than that, I was mostly there just for the conversation about the models, um, so I don't know if anything really happened after I left.
I'll update you next week when I.
But yeah, it's, it's an ongoing, you know, that, that task force, I continue to enjoy working with them and, and bringing you updates, uh, there. So I think there's some really good work happening, but, uh, we will be at a decision point, um, hopefully in, after, you know, several more meetings. With our partner agency, so if I could just request that those documents get distributed more broadly. So that you can let us know if you've got thoughts.
Great, thank you. I look forward to seeing that. Mr. Mayor.
I do have a statement that I am going to read. So with so many constituents asking the same question and the media, I'd like to just read the statement regarding my vote earlier for the mayor. Um, I chose not to vote for Mr. Nell as mayor, because I felt like he was not ready to be put in a position at that time. During previous council men, meetings, Mr. Nell would often speak off the cuff, causing some inflammatory conversations on social media. I did not appreciate the direction he took with people regarding issues that we were dealing with at the time on council. It was my opinion at the time, Mr. Nell would not be suitable as mayor, so I voted against him. After the vote, Mr. Nell did approach me, and I did tell him my reasons for not voting for him. He said that he would do better in the future, and the conversation was one that just, it was not disrespectful in any way. We just both just agreed to disagree. So, um, that's essentially why I didn't vote for him. I'd also like to correct my statement last Friday. I inadvertently forgot about Kristen Lutz, because, uh, we had just been elected and shortly after we got elected thereafter, she got off the council. But this is not to diminish her in any way that she was vice mayor in twenty twenty, and so I do apologize to Kristen for that. And then for mentioning that the women, the reason why I had said, stated that the women was because of the mayor's comments. Throughout the year, and it was inflammatory directed towards women. And so it was just for the interim, I just thought that maybe it would be better for the council to have a female. Regardless of who it is, it's not to diminish a, a man on the position. It's just that, it just kind of felt like a lot of it was targeted more towards women, so. That is the statement, and then. Okay. Um, visit Casper, went to visit Casper today. They had a lot of great information. I'm not gonna go through all of it. Um, Indian relay races, which I did not know. They had, um, who was it? The Sixty Minutes was there. And then also Rolling Stone Magazine was there. And so in Sixty Minutes, they said like in a few weeks that it's gonna be aired. And so I thought that was pretty neat. We had no clue that Sixty Minutes and Rolling Stones was covering that. Um, Bill Whitaker from Sixty Minutes was here. So, um, they're doing a brand refresh, have Logan Wilson doing some amazing things. And then they're also have got a trailhead at Hell's Half Acre that they're moving forward with, that should be ready next year. And then I did stop by, um, Senior Citizens Day for, they had a Alzheimer's outreach program. Very informative, but they also were promoting the two-on-one program, and I think that that is a program that, that people just, we don't realize that it's out there. So two-on-one, if you're needing assistance for anything, and it doesn't matter whether you're elderly, a veteran or whatever. If you're needing help with assistance or, or moving or whatever, this is an assistance program that you can call. And they can direct you to wherever you're needing, so they have a database of hundreds all over the state that, of companies that can help you. So if somebody would just call two-on-one, they can absolutely get you the help that you're looking for.
Thank you. Uh, just a couple items for me, uh, I have, uh, the welcoming, the Wyoming Association of County Officers tomorrow morning. I know a couple of you are gonna be going to the banquet on Thursday night, I think. Vice Mayor is, Kyle, are you going to?
I got the invite this afternoon.
Yeah, great. Yeah, I know Jenna is, I'm not sure who else, but the banquet, I won't be able to go, I have a prior engagement on that night. But I'll, I'll be able to see them at the, um, welcoming of tomorrow, so I'll, um, say hello to them. Um, as far as there are some boards and committees that, um, need to be, um, temporarily stop gapped. Um, I'll temporarily, for the next couple of months, be, um, representing, uh, the council on the Wyoming Regional Board, uh, the Central Wyoming, uh, Water Regional Board. Um, for that time period, um, that we can kind of go from there, um, next year in twenty twenty-four. Um, whoever the, uh, the new mayor is to appoint whatever they see, see fit, but I'll be that, um, uh, for, for the time being. And also, Steve alluded to this already, I did ask Steve to go ahead and be the, um, point person for CNFR. Um, as, as, as that happened as well. And then, um, anything else? You and I talked about that. I can't remember. I'm looking. I think that's it. Um, I'll still be going to the breakfast with the, the, um, county commissioners and mayors, um, in the mornings. I'll make sure you get on that invite, um, as well, for that morning breakfast that we do, um, once a month. Um, and then Friday, I just have the homeless initiatives, um, homeless coalition on Friday. That's it for me. I think that's it for us. If there's anything for the good of the order.
Trying to see, we need to make sure that your appointment to that water board is ratified next week. At the, at the council meeting, because that is a joint powers board.
Will that need to be, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, awesome. Thank you, Steve, for that. I appreciate it. Yes.
Is there an alternate for CNFR?
I, I'm not, I mean, I, I love CNFR, but I'm not real a market alternate type of guy, so are you interested?
Good guy.
Well, no, no, God, I don't know. I don't know what it means.
Be an alternate? You don't like a signing alternate? What are you talking about?
All of it, all the, no, that sounds great. That, that would be great. Um, can we make that note, Carter, for a little bit, that, um, Jenna will be the alternate for CNFR? Great, thank you.
You're gonna try to come to the meeting, uh, it's, will be Monday night, the second, at five o'clock at the Event Center. Upstairs next to their office, going the back door and upstairs.
Gonna write that down.
Yeah, do I need, do I need to write that down for you, since I'm your personal assistant? Okay.
Yeah. Thank you, everyone. We appreciate it. Be safe, everyone. Thank you.